Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. Welcome also to those on Rogers Television who are joining us this evening watching on TV, as well as those who are also watching via the Internet. If I can ask everyone to please stand for, as you're able, for the Singing of Oh Canada. And tonight it's by Emily Hartman. Emily, thank you very much for joining us this evening. As members of council and staff will tell you, as much as we think all of our voices are wonderful when we have to lead Oh Canada, it certainly was much better having someone with your incredible voice here this evening. So thank you for joining us and leading us in our national anthem, particularly in the lead-up to Canada Day on Wednesday. It's been moved by Councillor Etherington that the minutes of the regular meeting held June 1st and special meetings held May 25th, June 1st and 15th is mailed to the Mayor and Councillors be accepted. All in favor? That's carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? None? Okay, unless otherwise directed, I'll show refer the communications as listed on the agenda. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried as well. And we'll now move into presentations. I'll come to the podium to do the first two, and then I'll turn it over to Janice Willeth, our facilitator of volunteer resources, who will then kick off the next batch after that, and various members of council will assist with those as well. Members of council, it's my pleasure this evening to recognize two members of our staff who have achieved success in various municipal development programs. As council knows, we do encourage our staff to take on personal development, particularly as it relates to their professional municipal careers, and two of them have done that. And I'll begin with Daphne Livingstone. Daphne, as you know, works in our City Clerk's Department, and Daphne recently completed her AMCTO Diploma in Municipal Administration. And so I'd like to invite Daphne forward and congratulate her on behalf of the city. And the next person who we're recognizing is a familiar face to us all, and that's our Deputy CAO for Financing Corporate Services, Dan Chapman. Dan has recently completed 10 years of dedication to public service and municipal management in the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators in the management capacity. And so I would like to invite Dan over to receive a certificate, as well as his 10-year camo pin. And now I'll turn it over to Janice Willeth to get things going with our years of service recognition for a variety of organizations. Janice?
Mayor and council, every year Volunteer Resources focuses on a theme for engaging and celebrating our volunteers. This year, we have focused on how our volunteers are building a caring community and have been doing so for generations, creating a tradition of caring. Building on our long history of helping, like the tradition of barn raising, volunteers in our community continue to look out for one another, share their skills and talents, and work together to do something meaningful for the community. Tonight, it is my great pleasure to be here on behalf of all of City Council and staff who work alongside our volunteers to help you celebrate the long service milestone anniversaries of some of our affiliated volunteer groups. Neighborhood associations and minor sports groups play an immeasurable role in the quality of life of our residents. The many lives these groups have impacted over their years of existence is a remarkable illustration of collective community action and the difference we can make when we work together to build a better Kitchener. And the volunteers who have led and supported these associations over the years are people from all walks of life who have adopted the pioneering spirit that is so much a part of Kitchener's fabric, true community builders. I invite our mayor to join me here at the podium now to recognize the tradition of caring these groups have supported over the years, to say thank you for what the current volunteers contribute today, and to inspire us to look forward to the caring city we're building together for tomorrow. We'll start with the presentations for minor sports groups. Healthy citizens make a healthy community. Forty minor sports organizations are affiliated with the City of Kitchener, operated by volunteers who serve as executive members, coaches, team managers, special event organizers, and fundraisers. From basketball to water polo, there is an activity for every sport enthusiast of all abilities. The first minor sports group we celebrate tonight is the Special Olympics Ontario-Kitchener-Waterloo. Julie Weitzler, John Emsley, and Tannis Gaylor are here tonight to accept this certificate of appreciation and celebration for 15 years of community building. The Special Olympics Ontario-Kitchener-Waterloo is a nonprofit charitable organization dedicated to providing year-round sports tradition, training, and competition opportunities for individuals with an intellectual disability. The club provides much-needed physical education programs to more than 240 local athletes who benefit physically, mentally, and socially through their support of 170 dedicated volunteers. Thank you and congratulations. The Excelsior Fencing Club, we have tonight Paul Schul and John Holtz here to accept our certificate of appreciation for 30 years of strong programming and the development of fencers in the tri-cities. Over the last decade, Excelsior has evolved into a club focused on community and youth programming and has garnered a reputation for excellence in these areas. Synchronized Swim Club, please welcome John Ortiz and Katrina Klein to accept the certificate of appreciation for the club's 30 years of community contributions. A nonprofit volunteer-run organization, KW Sync Pro, offers a year-round recreational and competitive programs in a fun and supportive team-based environment. We welcome or thank the club for 30 years of community contributions. Next, we have the KW Sidewinder Sledge Hockey Club. Jason Ryan and Chris Dekovich are here tonight to accept our appreciation for this KW Sidewinder Sledge Hockey Club's 35 years of service in our community. It's an adapted version of regular ice hockey where they sit on a lightweight sledge that has skates and blades attached to the bottom, and they are available for children, teens, and adults to help them play hockey despite their physical disabilities. Next, we have the Southwest Kitchener Optimus T-Ball. Please welcome Cheryl Patterson and Gary Young and Helen Wilson from the club to accept a certificate of appreciation for 35 years that the club has been involved in the community. The club has ensured that the players have a great season, learning and improving their baseball skills, make some new friends, and have some fun. Thank you for 35 years. Next, we have Chris White and Natasha Alexic from the Forest Hill T-Ball Association to accept our appreciation for the club's 45 years of making a difference in their little leaguers. Their mission is to teach children the fundamentals of hitting, throwing, and catching in a team spirit and fun and supportive environment. A great introduction to baseball for six-to-nine-year-old boys and girls. Next, we will be celebrating our neighborhood associations operating across our community. They have a long tradition of creating connections, strengthening belonging, and providing low-cost programs and services close to home. The associations, some operating for generations, rely on teams of incredibly dedicated neighborhood association volunteers, and we celebrate the milestone anniversaries of six of these associations tonight. First, we celebrate the Cherry Park Neighborhood Association. Thank you to Henry Resnussen for being here tonight on behalf of the Cherry Park Neighborhood Association to accept our appreciation for the association's 20 years of service to their neighborhood. The Cherry Park Neighborhood Association is a dedicated group of neighborhood volunteers who strive to encourage the participation of all their residents in decision-impacting them in recreation programming and in social events, like the Awesome Cherry Festival that's happening this coming weekend. They're striving towards creating a friendly and positive place for neighbors to live. Next, we have the Victoria Park Neighborhood Association, and we'd like to welcome Melissa Bowman and David Oper to celebrate their 40 years of service to the community this year. The Victoria Park Neighborhood Association is committed to excellence in serving all customers, including people with disabilities. Just recently, the association held a grand opening celebration of the new accessible playground structure in the park, and all the amenities added to the park over the years have been enjoyed by generations of citizens. Our first neighborhood, our next neighborhood group to be on tonight is the Downtown Neighborhood Alliance, represented by, again, Melissa Bowman. The Downtown Alliance is a collaboration of neighborhood associations, including Victoria Park Neighborhood Association, Central Frederick, Old Berlin Town, Auditorium, Mount Hope Brightup Park, and Cedar Hills. Ten years ago, these associations joined forces to bring neighbors together in the heart of the city at the Downtown Community Centre, and we thank them for their collaborative efforts over the last 10 years. Next, we have Brian Laube, Glenn Shields, Peter Sharman, Warren Stoke, and Jean Markovich here, representing the Auditorium Neighborhood Association, to accept our appreciation for 25 years of community service. The Auditorium Neighborhood Association works to encourage and promote community pride in their neighborhood and improvements of facilities serving their neighborhood. A great example of their work is the revitalization of Noel Park through a festival of neighborhood grant won for their annual Waddle Fest event and other funds raised by the association. They've turned the park into a harmonious green space that invites neighbors to spend their time outside together. Next, we have the Forest Heights Community Association. Board members Doug McCluskey and Ted Locer are here to accept our appreciation for the 40 years that the Forest Heights Community Association has been active in their neighborhood. The association focuses on promoting wellness through social and recreational programs and volunteer opportunities for their residents. One such example just took place at the end of June, their annual Family Fun Day, a great neighborhood tradition made possible by their many community volunteers. And last, but definitely not least, as they say, we welcome the representatives from the Pine Grove Neighborhood Association, Bob McCall and Cheryl McCall, to accept our appreciation for the association's outstanding 55 years of action in their neighborhood. The Pine Grove Neighborhood Association volunteers have continued to work to address the issues that affect the members of their Pine Grove community. Please join us in sharing our appreciation to the group's 55 years of service in the Pine Grove neighborhood. I would also like to take this one moment to also recognize this year's Senior of the Year for the City of Kitchener, Mike Sherter. This honor from the Government of Ontario was presented at the Salute to Seniors event on June 11th, and honored Mr. Sherter for his volunteer work with the Food Bank of Waterloo Region, St. Vincent de Paul, Sunnyside Long-Term Care Facility, St. Daniel's Church Social Committee, and for 35 years of volunteering with the KW Softball Club, and most notably for his neighborly support, helping his neighbors with lawn care and shoveling and other tasks, and really making it possible for several seniors to stay living in their homes longer. So please join me one last time for thanking and congratulating all the volunteers here tonight and for the years of service of all the organizations they represent. You're community builders, and we thank you for continuing our community's tradition of caring.
All I can say is wow. I think, you know, when you look down this list and you look at the number of years that some of these sports groups and some of these neighborhood associations have been around, and you think of all of the volunteers, and you think of all of the literally thousands, if not tens of thousands, of volunteer hours that have gone into these associations over 55, 45, 40, 35 years and worked their way down, and it just gives you an incredible sense of the amazing people we have in our community who are willing to roll up their sleeves and make a significant difference to improve the lives of others. So on behalf of council, let me thank all of you who had the opportunity to represent your organizations here today, but please pass on our thanks to the many, many other volunteers in your organizations. Our community is much better because of it, and so a heartfelt thank you to all of you, and one more round of applause. And now, while I know many of you would just very much like to spend the entire evening here and watch democracy in action, if you prefer to do it over a glass of wine or a cup of tea or the beverage of your own choice at your own home, feel free to take this opportunity now or at any point in the next little while to exit, and we'll continue on with our council meeting. But again, thank you very much. We'll just take a second while people are transitioning. I do want to, at this moment, remind delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentation. And we will begin with Item A, and this is, notice has been given for any member of the public to speak for or against the bylaw to name private roads in the residential development at One Adam Street, Victoria Common. Is there anybody here for the purpose of the naming of the streets? Anybody here for the purpose of naming of the streets at Victoria Common? No? Okay, well, if not, then we'll come back to that item at the end when we deal with those issues in the agenda. We'll now move on to Item 6B, and Laine Berman from the Mount Hope Brightup Neighborhood Association.
Hello, council, I'm Mayor Verbanovic and other councilors, as well as staff. Thank you for having us tonight. Wanted to come tonight to bring you an update for the street painting project, which everybody around the horseshoe approved last year, excuse me, sorry, last year in July. We made some significant progress, not without some stumbles along the way, but I wanted to at least put it out there for all of council to see. How about I point in the right direction? So, this repainting project was approved last year, July of 2014, as a pilot project for the intersection of Wilhelm and Aaron Street. The project was requested as an attempt to traffic calm in our neighborhood. After we asked staff to take a look at it, this was what we came up with as a feasible solution. There has been no cost to the city, and there will be no cost to the city. Funding is entirely through donations. I'd like to thank Doug Bain from Hub Systems, who is donating all of the paint, Hazel from Sign Shack in our neighborhood, who is donating the stencils, and John Johnson, who's here with me today, who did the design work for the project. We had estimated a cost of about $500 for the painting. It's coming in well below that, which means we'll be able to use some of those funds to have a little bit of a party. We scheduled six public meetings throughout the winter to discuss what residents would like to see in the design. From that, we gathered some information. We also met with grade-one students at King Edward Public School to discuss what their neighborhood meant to them, and had them draw out their ideal intersection. It was quite interesting, lots of monsters for some reason, and train tracks, that was the other one. We required 70 signatures and 13 trips out to get those signatures. Some of those trips were one hour, some of them were two, some of them were three or four, and when you start engaging residents, as I'm sure you all well know, it becomes sometimes a lengthy conversation that's very off-topic. I'd also like to thank Councillor Marsh for assistance with getting signatures. Very important for us to have that assistance. We, so far, we've secured a drone to do some filming, a slushy machine to help out with the kitties, popcorn machine, and we're working on a time-lapse photography so that we can make sure that this is all done, as well as hopefully we can hijack somebody's Wi-Fi to run a periscope throughout the event. Special thanks to John Johnson, again, from Bareface Design. So this is a fabulous design. So if you haven't seen it already, here it is. And I'll just, the next one is a little bit bigger of an intersection. So maybe John could speak to the drawing itself?
Hi. So this was a design that Laine and I originally discussed the idea of. I went to a couple of those meetings he talked about, and we went through different ideas. It started, the idea came out of sort of Pennsylvania Dutch Mennonite hex symbols, which are actually painted on barns in order to bring good things into the barn. So using the city's heritage and its connection to that sort of community, I made our own sort of hex sign to go in the middle of the intersection and really bring good things into the intersection for everybody. So we tied in the elements of the shoe and the shirt and the chair and the suitcase that are on the bridge that's right near our neighborhood that was just built, as well as the heart and the button, the button being the history of the city with its button-making industry, and the heart just being the love of the neighborhood. And then finally, there's the blue ring through the middle, which is to represent the Grand River, and the outer ring of handprints, which at the day of the party, the idea will be that all the kids will get involved and put their handprint on. So even if you can't get involved in, you know, more detailed painting, at least you can have your hand as a part of the intersection, although hopefully you don't want to go look at it too much, because it will be in the middle of an intersection. So that's basically the gist of the design. I hope people like it.
So far, the response from our residents has been overwhelmingly positive. Two residents were not willing to sign for personal reasons. There was concern raised about the surface area friction, especially by motorcyclists, and there was a request made for silica to be added to the paint, which it already comes with silica, which is great. And surprisingly, residents were really concerned about the points of the actual design pointing to the cardinal directions, which we discussed with staff, and we felt that the white designs point almost north, south, east, and west, and we would just put a letter symbol on each of them. So I'd like to invite all of council and staff to come and join us on July 18th at 1:00 PM to paint the intersection. Our rain date is July 25th at 1:00 PM as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. See, we have at least one question for you or comment, Councillor Marsh. Just one sec, staff, we just actually switched us over already from a committee to a council meeting. So go ahead.
No questions, just thank you so much for all your dedicated work, Laine, on getting this painted intersection from idea to reality. You know, I'm so looking forward to seeing that on the road, it's going to be great. I have never heard a negative comment about it, so I think it's wonderful. And John, thank you for dedicating your time, for donating your time as a, you are already a professional graphic designer, and you've donated this time to make a beautiful design, so thank you very much.
Great, and I too want to add my thanks to both of you and everyone else who's been involved with it, but in particular to you, Laine. I know this has been a labor of love since last year, and you were both passionate and persistent, and it demonstrates that both of those things not only pay off, but help to build great neighborhoods, and I think this will be a great place-making kind of initiative, the kinds of things we want to do more of in the future, and thank you for all of your work in demonstrating how it can be done. Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to Item C then, which is Mr. Shane Chapman of Chap Signs. Welcome, Mr. Chapman.
Hi, thanks, thanks for your time. Never done this before.
No worries, just relax and...
So I installed a pylon sign for Enterprise Rent-A-Car, and I thought I was following all the rules, but according to stay back far enough from the property line for the permit that I applied for, Enterprise, since the permit was applied for, put a cement wheelchair ramp in. So I had to move the sign. Stayed back the property line distance, but I moved it towards the middle of the building, and not knowing there was a bylaw that I had to be 15 meters from the neighbor's sign, and I'm only 12.06 meters, so...
Now, sir, are you aware that the recommendation on this is to approve it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to come...
Come to support, to say you're supportive of that?
Yeah, in case there was a question or something, right?
Wonderful. Well, I don't, I don't see any questions on it, so if you take your seat, and we'll deal with this item right now.
Thank you.
You'll move it? Councillor Galloway-Seelock has moved it, second by Councillor Ionitis. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been approved.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Have a great night.
It's not always that, painless, though. I hope you enjoyed your first experience. Next, we'll move on to Item D, Lisa Harmy, Architectural Conservancy of Ontario, and she's being joined by Ms. Patty Clark, in consistent with council... Inconsistent with council procedural bylaw, as there are two delegations representing a group, the two of them together will be given 10 minutes to make their presentation. Welcome, ladies.
Hi, how are you? Just going to arrange a clock so that we don't go over. So, I wanted to correct quickly. I am not actually currently a member of the ACO and I'm not speaking directly for the ACO. I'm a member of the ad hoc group, one of the four groups that formed following on from the demolition of the Mayfair. My colleague here, Paddy Clark, is a member of the ACO, and the way we've been operating is that the ACO recently, the executive recently voted to support our call for an inquiry into these events. I wonder if we can start by agreeing that there has been a loss or that we feel a loss. I have a set of 27 questions. These would be the nagging questions that were referred to in the Record editorial of May 21st titled "An Unfair Fate From The Mayfair Before The Mayfair". This is a voice of Kitchener, this comes from Kitchener The Record, and one of the things they said, or one of the points they made, was that we would be left with the rather nagging questions in addition to the gaping hole. "No one wanted to see the Mayfair knocked down," they wrote, "which makes its loss all the more puzzling. If Kitchener can't save buildings it has actively tried to preserve, what hope is there now that it can do what is needed to save other structures?" We feel that cities that are well-run, that have a fully transparent process, can preserve heritage and that have the correct procedures in place. We feel that, far from simply dragging people over old ground, an independent inquiry will stand to, rather as the initial point was made, an independent inquiry will actually inform people, will allow both council and city to know more about what happened and why it happened and who did what, and we believe that it's a crisis worth examining, not a crisis to let go. So I'm going to read you the set of questions that were put together, not by me but by a group of people, over two or three meetings, I believe, with a whiteboard. The first question is, "Why did the CBO let only those people he approved have entered the building? Why did he refuse to let others enter? Why were offers to inspect the buildings conditioned by engineers and architects with heritage expertise consistently refused at all stages of the project, even when the 156 to 158 portion of elevation was still standing and set to have a significant portion of it saved? Even at that point, we refuse the possibility of having an expert look at it to keep it? Why were both engineering reports not made available to the public when demolition was being considered as the primary option, i.e. when it was in emergency? The engineering reports did not say the building could not be saved. May we see the estimate that showed it was too expensive to preserve the building?", assuming there was an estimate. "Why was there no consideration given to facade retention beyond cost in the Blackwell reports? Did the city have professional engineers on staff who reviewed the consultants' reports? If so, can we see their comments? Can the full details of the Ministry of Labour dispute and delay during demolition be made public? Can records of all interactions with the Ministry of Labour during the current owner's tenure be made public? Is it not common to use water hoses during demolition to slake dust? Why was this not done during the early days of the demolition? How much has the demolition cost the city in staff, time and materials? Has the city calculated the value of the tourism dollars lost due to the loss of these buildings and the unattractive streetscape which results?", assuming that that can be calculated. "How much is the loss? Has the Economic Development Department estimated the cost of the demolition disruption to downtown businesses?", an easier one to calculate, I imagine being a bit more tangible. "What is that cost? How do the BIA members feel about the demolition and its effects? What is the cost to the environment of the demolition, for example trucking debris to the landfill, carbon footprint and loss of energy? How can we ask for city and council to have accountability with the chief building official's office? Why was there a delay in completing the designation of the building after council approved this action in 2008? Does the city feel it's adequately resourced to intervene in situations where designation is delayed too long or in situations like this at all? If not, what is the city planning to do? In 2005, the province granted municipalities the power to remediate heritage buildings and bill owners through their property taxes. Why has the city not enacted such a bylaw? Unoccupied buildings fall into disrepair. What are the city's plans to fill empty downtown buildings, especially ones it owns?", and the reference here is to the Legion Building on Ontario Street North. "Can the city release the building condition assessment of the Mayfair done before the city purchased it and any other building condition assessments done since it has been sold? What were the standards that informed the efforts used or not used to winterise the Mayfair in 2014? On what basis was a permit issued for the removal of the interior finishes and partitions? Can it be made available? Quadrangle architects were hired to do measured drawings and photos of the Mayfair building. Can that information also please be made available? Were the granite stones from Mayfair Upper Extension saved? And if so, where are they and how are they stored? Did the heritage planner receive a covenant as to where salvaged brick and other elements would be stored? Was a GRP, ground radar penetrating survey done together with sinkhole repair before or after demolition on the roadways around the site? If so, can the results be made available? The final question in my set, which number 27, was the extent of documentation given to the, or what was the extent of documentation given to the demolition contractor and can the material be made available? That's the full set of questions that I have, and I would like, we came as a joint delegation with the intention that Patty would help with the answering of questions as well, and she didn't intend to have a separate speech, and I've gone over to seven minutes. So unless you want to add something in particular, I think we're happy to leave it there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a couple of members of council with questions, so councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr Chair, to the two delegates. I compliment your group on caring so much about heritage, heritage buildings, and spending so much time and energy on this issue. So I had a couple of questions, a couple of quick questions. What does your group want done with these questions? Would they form part of your suggested inquiry? Or if no such inquiry takes place, do you still hope to get an official response from this council that will address those questions?
Well, they are intended to form the basis for an inquiry. I mean, I didn't say it exactly, but we're here to request that there is an independent inquiry and that it's based around these questions. Some of them are requests for information under the Freedom of Information Act, but we hope to have them answered, and there are obviously other avenues that we can use to obtain answers to those questions, which we feel are due.
So you want council to order such an inquiry?
Yes, we do, yes.
Okay.
And we believe it would be to council's benefit to do that, because otherwise, the history of this will remain and the rumours will remain.
Do you have any suggestions about who might conduct that independent review?
Well, as we've gone along through this, we have been able to provide a list of experts that exist. There are many experts that exist in this province on this subject, and so certainly the ACO will be able to suggest people and other members who've participated on this side, so I wouldn't have thought there'd be any difficulty finding suggestions. And I would hope that the ACO could make input, that they're the main body in Ontario. There's also the Ontario Heritage Trust, the second body, that could provide resources in that respect.
And one last question. How much do you think we should pay for, how much do you think this inquiry would cost?
I think that's really a great question, and unfortunately, I don't have an answer to it. I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't expect it to go over, you know, 20,000 or something. We've had estimates on what legal action will cost, and that proceeds by the hour in the hundreds of dollars, obviously, and the retainer usually runs to several thousand. So, you know, I really feel actually, as advocates, that all that is ever done is that we ask questions, and we are entitled to ask questions, regardless of our level of expertise and regardless of our resources to fund those or to resource them. And so, really, the answer to that is, I'm not too sure.
Okay. And I appreciate your answers. I agree with your answers. Mr Chair, I'll have some comments when we answer all the questions, and I want to attempt a motion, but I'm sure you'll have something to say on that. Thank you.
Well, you're the first one to ask for the motion, so I'll give you the floor when the time comes. Councillor Fernandez.
Yes, thank you, thank you ladies for coming in, and I've been following, of course, with keen interest the emails that have been going forwards and backwards. Your questions are very important, and I think it's really important for us to answer them. There are some questions that I wonder if, I guess if I was to look at the 27 questions, if you prioritise them in what you think are the most important ones to be answered, or do you feel that the majority of these questions need to be answered? And, you know, you alluded to the public's opinion and the rumours, and can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit more?
For me, actually, the most important ones, I mean, some of them are kind of far, you know, when you write a list of questions, you tend to put significant ones at the top because they're the ones you want people to read before they get bored, before the end. But for me, it's the information that we're requesting, really. That's what needs to be made public and that's what needs to be seen. So, the records, the permits, the standards that prevailed, and I would think for council too, actually, to have answers to all of those questions would be very good, so...
Okay. My understanding is that there are a significant number of experts within your group who have made comment and who are very concerned about how this process went forward. Have they, were they part of creating the questions and were they, have they also offered their assistance in an inquiry if that was to be moved forward?
The questions were circulated to, from the ACO's mailing list to everybody, actually. We had some, we had a mixture of people putting them together. As I mentioned before, there were no less than four groups that formed after this happened. That's the scale of response that's needed. There was 23 people that turned up to an ad hoc meeting in somebody's home, but they were mixed between engineers and architects, professionals actually, who have taken an interest in seeing that really good standards prevail here. But there were also regular people, citizens who are interested in their environment, and ACO members as well, so it's just that answer? I can't remember...
Yeah, yeah, it does. No, I, well, I mean, I think it's important for the general public here today and the rest of council to understand that there were many professionals that were part of those ad hoc groups who were putting these questions together and had great concerns. One last sort of question, and that is, you alluded to rumours and concerns about what the public in general is feeling about this. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Do I say something? Well, you know, it's, this situation is not regular. I don't think that anybody can defend it as being regular. A situation of sheer panic, the situation of sheer panic that prevailed really, which meant that little to no consideration could be given to process or to what was the right thing to do, is concerning for everybody, and it happens that it's particularly concerning for professionals because they have the feeling that the environment in which they operate is one which is unstable and risky, and so they don't know if plans that are made will be carried out, and that's really a problem. But beyond that, many, I've spoken to many people and on different levels, both even in academe or on the street, and, you know, the conspiracy theory after something happens, if there's an assassination or if people come up with things, and I don't think it's to the city's benefit to leave those questions hanging. I really don't. And, you know, what do they say? They say, "Oh, the first time is, you know, unlucky, the second time is foolish, and then the third time, questions have to be asked." It's, I don't feel it's good enough.
Thank you so much for your time and your energy and your very frank and honest answers. I appreciate that.
Councillor Marsh.
I'm next. Thank you for coming in and for bringing forward all these very important questions. I agree that we need to have a more proactive approach when we look at heritage buildings. And I did diligently read all the 25 questions that were forwarded to me.
Twenty-seven.
There are 25 questions on the sheet that was given to me.
Oh, are there? We added...
Yeah, so then you added two, and then when you read them out, they were certainly not in the same order, so I'm sure that, you know, if we were to organise these questions in terms of future focus, general focus, and, you know, looking back at the process that was followed for the Mayfair and the Heeman Building, I think we would have, you know, a more reasonable way of looking at it, because really, in my personal opinion, a general inquiry or an independent review of all that went down, you know, would, for me, I guess I should form this in the form of a question. Do you feel that all these questions, which have varying levels of focus on what did happen, and some of them no focus on what did happen but more on what should happen future, don't you think that there might be other ways to approach this other than an independent review that looks like we're completely untrusting of the process that happened in the first place?
Do you want to say something? All falling to me. Sorry. But we are untrusting of the process because there wasn't one. So, that would be the reason why we feel that it should be dealt with independently, because...
Go ahead, Patty.
As you said, there are, the questions are all over the map, but that's the way they came in, and there was some work done to try to, you know, to try to work that around, but still, there are questions coming from a lot of different directions, and probably, you know, in your job, they're coming to you as well. So, I can see that, this is an idea of how to do it, but I think that there's a pretty strong feeling that some, something needs to be, you know, something needs to be looked at here.
Right.
And there are, we do feel, I mean, the Ombudsman of Ontario does look into such cases. In fact, I'm not sure if that's the system that prevails here, because I know it doesn't prevail in every municipality in that way, and the PEO, which is the Engineers' Association of Ontario, may... And the PEO, which is the Engineers Association of Ontario, may also take an interest. And obviously, there's also a straightforward legal route to obtain, not straightforward, excuse me, a legal route to obtain answers to these kind of questions that people ask. So there are many ways that it could be addressed. And as far as process is concerned, we think it's wonderful that, or that Kitchener Heritage is moving to establish and to improve its process and so on. But nonetheless, the fact of matter is that they were, or had to be relatively silent during this process, and we would really like to see at arm's length, operating as we do at arm's length, we would like to see them further empowered. So that, I see buildings on King Street at the moment that are not looking as they ought or are looking like they won't be around very much longer. So we feel that there's an effort to be made somehow to empower Kitchener Heritage further than it is currently.
Okay.
Resources.
I, you know, yeah, I'll have a question of staff at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schneider.
Yes. So with what you're wanting to accomplish with this inquiry, is the goal for improved practices moving forward?
Of course. Yes, of course. But also to dispel the suspicion of, you know, at best, just sloppiness, at worst, some kind of personal gain throughout the process for one of the actors. We would really like to see that dispelled and addressed, which, in my view, is what an inquiry does.
Okay. And I know there's a lot of emotion around a heritage issue, but in my office, I have three books on the history of Kitchener. One written by Rich Mills, one by John English in Canada, McLaughlin.
Which I have.
And one by Bill Moyer. And during the height of all this, I went through these books. Not once in the index is there any mention of the Mayfair Hotel. Do you know why that might be?
Um, no, maybe it was called something different. I don't know. Or maybe, maybe even it was to do with the unfortunate stain that hangs over the building, and the fact that for some reason, we can't seem to handle the idea of having a little bit of grit in the city. I mean, you know, I don't actually think that a building is forever tainted by its past or by those who have occupied it. I, I mean, okay, if I can digress. I grew up in Dublin. I was educated in Dublin. And in Ireland, for a very long time, they wanted to knock down everything that was left that the British had built. And then, at a certain point, they got sense, and they thought, well, hang on, these are good buildings. And just because they were built by an invading power doesn't mean that we have to get rid of them all. And then they began to make something of the city, and it's an amazing city, so.
No, I'm not insinuating that it's for that. I was just saying for its historical significance, for three authors not to mention it, is a little strange to me.
There would be a lot of buildings not mentioned in those three, I mean, that's, I don't see the, I don't see the connection at all, actually. I don't, I don't.
Well, I would just, I would just suspect that...
I mean, it's not the City Hall, it's not, you know...
No, but there are, there's many other businesses and places mentioned in pictures, but the Mayfair from all three was missing.
Right, and Heeman Hardware wasn't mentioned there either, then?
Heeman may have a mention, I think, in this book.
But would you be questioning the evaluation that Heritage Kitchener gave on the building in terms of it being of value?
No, I'm not questioning, I'm just, I'm just saying, three historical books did not mention it. That's all.
I expect if you saw three books that were specifically on the architecture in Kitchener, that would be a different matter. These are history of Kitchener, but, you know, they're, they cover a lot of aspects of history. But anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe it'll go in now.
Counselor Ionitis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. First of all, I just want to say, personally, I think it's a great loss that we lost the building. I don't think there's anyone here that's had as much personal experience with that building than myself, so I want to go with that context. When you had mentioned that you wanted an independent arm's length, to me, that didn't sound like it was independent when you were saying the ACGO would be involved in all that, because to me, that's being right directly involved with it. So it'd be a conflict. So can you please elaborate that a little bit?
Yes, certainly I can. I wasn't suggesting anybody at all from the ACO. I, I don't think anybody is suggesting that the inquiry be dominated by the ACO. All that they're saying is that there is expertise, unbiased expertise, that's used every day to determine the future of buildings and to make decisions on them. And that is available to you at relatively low cost, or at no cost in this case, and you would be foolish not to avail yourself of it.
Okay. As far as all the citizens that are involved in this inquiry ask, do you have a list of those citizens?
I have 107 signatures on a petition, online petition. We have a list of ACO members, and the ACO executive has supported this, so we have that. We have a substantial number of assorted people who've been involved. And we've also got quite and continuing significant coverage from media outlets.
Okay, so if there was an independent inquiry, then those individuals would be, in your opinion, removed from the process?
Remove, how would they be removed?
Because they have, they have, they have an interest in this project, so if they were involved, they wouldn't really technically be, they, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be a third party.
Are you saying they wouldn't be asked, there would be no questions asked of them? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, because they have, they have a vested interest, because they've signed the petition, they have a position, and if they were involved in the process, it would taint their, it would taint the position, so that's...
This is not meant to be adversarial, really. I mean, it's, I would think, I would hope that people would be, would be asked for input, if that, I'm a little confused, but...
Regardless, to me, that's, that's kind of a...
Not, not in a, I don't think people would be involved in a professional manner.
Okay, because to me, that's a little bit of a conflict there. Well, my, my last question is, what's your experience with dealing with the building code?
Mine or Patty's?
Well, you're an architect, correct?
I'm not an architect in Canada. I'm a BCIN holder. I have a small buildings BCIN. I tend to do smaller buildings, but I've dealt with the building code on larger projects, too.
Okay, so when...
And it's a minimum standard. It's not something to...
So if you, if you, if you understand the building code a little bit, then you, shouldn't you understand why the chief building officer would have certain powers and regulations that are not included from this council? Like, they're statutory...
Of course I do, yes.
Okay, so why would you ask those questions?
What questions?
The ones that you're asking about, the chief building officer...
The one about asking why did the CBO let only those people he approved have entered the building?
Well, yeah. You would, if you, you said you understood those, so why would you want to ask those same questions?
I didn't say I understood why he behaved exactly as he did, actually. And I, my understanding of the Ontario building code, and I compare, I compare it often to codes that I have experience of in other countries. My understanding of the Ontario building code is that it is actually a minimum standard to be obtained for performance in any situation. And that is not to preclude a higher standard being attained, which is what is needed in some cases.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Davey. Oops, sorry.
Oh, Mayor Verbanovic, I have some questions of staff.
I'll come back to you.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. You're aware that, of course, that Heritage Kitchener is looking at bringing back a report with respect to how we can protect the existing heritage buildings going forward, correct?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, so I guess my question then is, and I think it's been asked, I'm not really sure, I haven't heard a clear answer. What do you hope, I'm very concerned about redundancy. What do you hope that this will achieve versus Heritage Kitchener looking at it independently?
I think we're hoping for some specific answers on the case of the Mayfair and the Heeman Building. That will contribute to what Kitchener Heritage is doing, but will also provide information. That's, this is a call for information, these are questions that people are looking for answers to.
Okay, so I guess, again, my concern then is, like, I really respect you brought these questions forward, and perhaps they should be forwarded to Heritage Kitchener as part of their, their approach going forward, but I just, I really don't see much here that, aside from looking at some conspiracy theory interests, that would not be redundant in what Heritage Kitchener is doing already.
I have to say to you that I really think the details of how the demolition was carried out, the details of why it was stopped at one point and restarted are salient to this particular set of events. So that, in particular, is something that I would have thought councillors, too, would want to know about. I think that the record of the building with the Ministry of Labor in, and information about how it deteriorated to the point it was at is essential to understanding what has gone on.
Okay. And I just want to be clear to you, you commented about earlier, again, going back to the concerns or conspiracy about buildings in the past. You've mentioned when it happens one, two, three, four times. What other buildings are you referring to?
I'm aware that there are two other buildings almost on the same site that were lost in a similar way, the Forsyth and the Smith House.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And like everyone here, I appreciate you guys having a appropriate interest in this, rightly so for the conservation of heritage properties and a segment of our past. You referred to your rationale why you put this forward, or these questions forward, because you want to dispel the conspiracy theorists out there. And I agree, this doesn't have to be confrontational, you know, we have to be supportive of you coming forward with your questions and us asking the right questions to see which direction to take. But as you presented or answered questions, you, you added your opinions that there could be individuals that had private gain, you referred, also to the fact that perhaps the buildings were brought down because we just didn't want that, that condition of buildings to exist in the core. So you've added more, you said, and you refer to what was happening in your native country as well. What, so I'm a little bit confused as to the direction that you're trying to, to bring this towards, because the questions that are laid out here, at what point, so I'm going to come to a specific question, at what point was any information restricted to you? That you, information or inquiry that you made of staff of asking questions, at what point was information restricted?
In the very beginning, in the very beginning, when it was declared all of a sudden as a matter of extreme panic that these buildings had to come down straight away.
I'm asking right now.
Yes.
I'm asking right now, as a citizen, that you've tried to contact staff, I'm sure you've had questions.
Yes.
Beyond of just asking for a private inquiry, oh, sorry.
We asked, we asked for the second engineer's report, and we didn't get it for 30 days, by which time the building was almost done.
You have it now?
Oh, finally, yes.
Okay.
And it had to be obtained by, under the Freedom of Information Act.
Problem is, the way you're positioning yourself, you're showing that there's a lot, there's been a lot of restricted information, even to date. And that is a concern, of course, that would be anyone's concern. And as council members, we have been privy to updates, and I haven't had any issues, concerns with the validity of what our chief building official has presented of his opinion, as well as the reports that have come forward. So to, like, is there still information that's not available to you guys right now, if you wanted to access information? You still feel that information's not being provided?
Well, I haven't seen the Ministry of Labor record for the building, from the point at which it was determined that it was signed, to the point at which it was determined that it was unsigned.
Okay, all right. The connection of that information, the necessity of that information, I don't understand. I guess I can ask questions of staff, but I just wanted to clarify, at what point has information been restricted, or are you still, you know, are you still concerned that information's not being available? The thing is, the relevance of the information that you really require, that you're saying to dispel conspiracy theorists, because you can go in many different directions, there's no, there's no, there's no end to that type of questioning. That's my concern. At what point, at what level information can be investigated or provided would dispel your concerns? I'm not certain.
I think the conspiracy reference came from Counselor Ionitis there? Is that, is that correct?
No, actually.
No, you referenced it.
Oh, is that, yeah, okay.
Oh, not you, I think, one of the delegates referenced it, actually, that your concern was that you wanted more investigation into the matters or what led up to the process, because there's a lot of conspiracy theorists out there, and your effort of bringing this forward is because you want to dispel it. And my concern was, as you provided information through questions answering, you added a few extra points, which did exactly that point of adding kind of that murkiness of who benefited or why was...
Yes, but can I just say, can I just say that failure to follow any kind of process that is capable of being defended is in itself a retention of information.
Well, and that's where I think we differ a little bit, and I'll make my comment afterwards, that there...
Did you have a finish off your questions? Because you're almost out of time.
I still have time?
You still have 30 seconds.
Oh, okay, perfect. I will. You're referencing a process, and we're looking into the exact thing of establishing that process.
But I'm talking about the specific process with regard to this building.
Okay, one at a time. Counselor Singh, what's your question?
My question was, I just wanted to rebuttal and say that we didn't have a process because we were dealing with matters that we didn't know of, that came very sudden, we dealt with matters as they came, but the process is being looked at right now.
Okay, Counselor Galloway-Silak.
Yeah. My question is, do you believe that there may be an interim step before pushing for a full inquiry, where we just have staff answer the questions and provide any information that you request? Do you think that's a first kind of level step to take before we go to the full inquiry? I just looked at your 25 questions that we have access to, and there may only be three or four that we may not be able to answer. Some of them are yes and no, right? Or providing information. So do you think that that's an interim step that you can take, provide, you know, everyone who's been engaged with this the answers, and then decide whether or not a full inquiry is really needed?
We were making a real effort tonight to not, to not really get into the, to get in, to, to not get into the specifics of exactly what went on, I mean, this building is down and...
And that's fair, I'm not, I don't want to go there either.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's answering the questions that's required. And if, if that process yielded the answers to the questions, then I don't think there would be a problem. But the reason, I suppose, some of the questions are, as you say, kind of qualitative, not so much concerned with specifics. But, and, and of course, then with those, the problem is that coming from within the city, it's kind of biased, and it's, or it's potentially biased, and it's not guided.
But you're going to get the same answers from the inquiry, because they're going to have to interview the staff person who made the decisions, right?
But many of these issues didn't involve the staff, they don't involve the staff. It's to do with the history of the building and how it's handled, or how, you know, the developer who purchased it at a relatively low price made decisions about how to deal with it. So they're not all internal issues. I think that's focused on getting the answers to the questions and having independence where it's needed.
Right, no, and I, like I said, I think there's some questions that we may not be able to answer, but let's give it a shot, and, because I have no problem asking staff to try and answer some of these questions, and then if they're the ones that really have the importance for you guys, and you get the information you need, then we may not need to go independent, but maybe there will be...
That is probably a matter for study, I suppose. It sounds like it's a matter for study and examination, which...
At the appropriate time, I know Counselor Retherington's looking at something a little bit stronger, but I'd be prepared to bring something of that nature forward, or have him do so at the appropriate time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councillor Marsh.
Uh, councillor Galloway-Seelock was driving at a similar, uh, uh, direction to where I was hoping we could go, and, uh, so my question was of staff, would, would we?
Well, we'll, we'll come back to questions of staff.
Okay, so we'll, okay, so I thought that we were there.
No, we're not there yet.
All right.
Councillor Etherington.
No, I'm just waiting for comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then I'll come back to you as well. Thank you very much, ladies, for coming in, uh, this evening. Uh, questions of staff, first I have councillor Marsh, and then councillor Ionitis. No, she got to ask for it first.
Thank you.
No, she asked before you, she was in the queue. Go ahead, councillor Marsh.
Thank you. So question of staff, so, uh, we've been given 25 questions, I'm sure we would be provided with the additional two, uh, if we were, if we asked, uh, would there be a, uh, an ability, and a willingness to, to seek to answer as many of these questions, uh, as possible?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we certainly recognize that there are some in our community that have an interest in, uh, learning more, and that's why we think the right, the right way to review this is to proceed with the review that council has already directed, which is already underway between city staff and the members of Heritage Kitchener. I think if anybody looks back over the past several years, there is not a single person around this horseshoe that can say that Heritage Kitchener isn't anything but independent. They've proven that time and time again. The challenge we have with answering these questions is that many of them have already been answered, but the reality is that folks just don't like the answers. Other questions are based on factual inaccuracies, other questions are asking for information which we cannot provide, and then finally, the remaining questions would require a significant amount of staff time in order to analyze the data and prepare a response. So if council feels it's, uh, a good use of staff time, uh, then we will certainly respond to these questions to the best of our ability. I do suspect that, uh, out of answers to 27 questions, we'll get 20 more questions. And so I would like some direction from council, we're more than happy to provide the answers to the best of our ability, but at some point, we need to know from you, how much time do you want us spending on this?
All right, so I will sup- um, at the time, support councillor Galloway-Seelock's, um, general direction in that, in that regard.
Councillor Ionitis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic, I guess my question would be directed to Mr. May, and, so let's just hypothetically, if, if this council chooses to, um, pass a resolution in requesting these, an independent inquiry, what kind of cost would that, um, be associated with?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's certainly a tough question to answer, and it's one that, uh, that I did speak to a few folks around City Hall today to see if we could ballpark it. The reality is, without knowing the scope of what this independent inquiry might look like, who would be engaged, what data, what qualifications would be requiring, it's difficult. Having said that, we would estimate that it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility that a review like that could cost between $50,000 and $100,000. Certainly there are other types of judicial reviews which can cost much more than that, but again, I would remind council that, while cost may be a factor in your decision, the reality is that we already have an independent review underway through your advisory committee, through Heritage Kitchener, you've provided them with that direction, and staff believe that's the right avenue to get these answers.
Okay, thank you, that, that clears my mind a little bit.
Um, councillor Galloway-Seelock, questions of staff, or you're, okay, go ahead.
There's a lot of questions here, some of them require yes and no, some of them require detail, some of them require information, so, um, and some of them will not get an answer from the city, I, I can, I can appreciate that, I, a couple quickly picked out, 22 probably can't be answered by the city, and five, just to give two examples, um, but there's a lot that can be accomplished. Um, will the Heritage Kitchener review really look into the detailed, um, questions that these are, or is it really, did we give, just to remind me, uh, did we really give them the direction, um, to look into the specific, or is it the move forward that they're looking at?
So my understanding is that Heritage Kitchener is taking, uh, look at our current practices and our best practices to see how we can do better in terms of heritage preservation going forward. As the delegation said, the intention was about improving our practices going forward, and my understanding of the Heritage Kitchener review is that's exactly what it's doing.
Okay, I, uh, trying to see if I have any other questions. What would be, um, if we gave you an upset limit on, uh, the time that would be spent in, in answering these questions, would that be, uh, better direction? Because I, I look at the ans- I look at the question, um, number 13 on our sheet, so it may not be the same one you guys have, so I'll just read it quickly. Uh, why did the CBO refuse to let anyone he did not approve of enter the building? Well, I probably, I can answer that, because the building was unsafe.
It's a perfect example of a question that we've already answered, and I just don't think some members of the community like or agree with our answer.
Right.
But that's a neat, easy and quick one to answer, for sure.
But is that something that we can just answer those ones that we can, and, and get them in writing, so that, um, you know, while it's been said over and over and over again, um, it's in writing, we've attempted to make, um, you know, answer the questions and gather the information that they're requesting, um, so that we can try and move forward, and if there is an inquiry, that, that, if there is, that it can form some of the, the basis of that moving forward.
We'll take council's direction on whether or not you want us to answer these questions, it's not a small body of work when you take it as a whole, uh, but we're in council's hands.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Fernandez, question of staff, okay, go ahead.
Um, we heard from the delegation that there is quite a vast number of experts that are part of this ad hoc group. Is it not possible for us to entertain some of their expertise that they may or may not offer pro bono, to review some of the information that they're asking answers to these questions?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, we would certainly need direction, um, you know, to councillor Ionitis's question, if this is going to be a truly independent review, you would want individuals who have not already taken a position on this, so that includes city staff at many levels, uh, but would also includes, I think, members of the public who have also taken a position.
But if we're, if we're purely starting off with answering the questions that can be answered, whether they've been asked before or not, and then go to the next step and find out the more detailed responses, if we can, um, have, I mean, yes, they may have some vested interest, but they're also professionals in their industry, guided by their policies and regulations, whether, I mean, we, I hear about that all the time from our staff, that they're professionals, and they have, you know, our engineers have their guidelines, and our planners have their guidelines, and these people have their guidelines, and their ethics, and their policies, and their principles. So whether they have a vested interest or not, they would be guided by their regulations, their ethics, and their policies. So if we have an opportunity to use their expertise in cooperation with our staff, why would we not take that opportunity?
Through you, Mr. Chair, these questions ask specific information, which I'm not aware any outside person would have the answers to. Right, these questions would come from the chief building official, uh, the two, I believe, qualified, uh, engineers who looked at the site, and both agreed that the building must come down because it posed a, a public safety risk. Right, so I don't know how we could bring in somebody from the outside to answer these questions, uh, it's those folks that are going to have the answers.
Okay, so my question was probably asked incorrectly, it isn't that I want them to answer the questions, it's I want them to be able to take a look at the analytical, and the data, and the information, uh, instead of paying somebody $50,000 to $100,000, we have the ability, as we did in the very beginning of this whole process with the Mayfair Hotel, when the ACO said that they would be willing to go in and take a look at the building, and, and, I'm, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I, it wasn't more than $500. This is the same opportunity.
So if we were going to go that route, I come back to, uh, to two points. First of all, uh, you have a chief building official with over 20 years of service to the community, who followed every single requirement of the Building Code Act to the law. We are absolutely 100% confident of that fact. There are going to be individuals who may have questions or may not agree, but the reality is, that is your chief building official who has the statutory authority to make that decision. What you're describing would take a considerable amount of staff time to support, and so I, again, put it back to council, that we're in your hands. If you would like us to take a considerable amount of time to follow up on these questions, well, we'll do our best to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Davie, comment, councillor Etherington, question of staff? Comment, okay. Councillor Singh, question of staff? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Didn't others say they had comments before me, or?
You, you said, I said question of staff, and you said yes.
I said comment.
Oh, comment, sorry, my apologies, no, there are, uh, we'll be going to councillor Etherington first. I, uh, have a question of staff. Mr. May, you said some of these are questions that our staff could answer, some of them were ones that, uh, potentially the two contract engineers, uh, would need to answer. Would that require additional expenditure from the city to get answers to those questions? From those engineers? Oh, sorry, you're not on, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I haven't looked at them in great deal, I, I suspect the answer is yes, they will want to get paid for their time. Uh, the other category of information which we, is not within our control, is information that the delegation referenced and interested in, which is the, uh, dialogue between the Ministry of Labor and the property owner, that is not a city issue, and as a result, we'd be very limited in what we could share on that particular issue.
Right, but they could go to the province, uh, on, on those types of questions?
They could absolutely do that.
Okay, um, there are some, some questions here, though, that, um, as councillor Galloway-Seelock indicated, could be, um, answered fairly, uh, readily, in terms of, uh, you know, where is the material stored, that kind of thing?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I did a quick calculation earlier, there are, by my count, uh, five questions that have already been answered publicly on numerous occasions, which we could relatively easy put answers together for. There are four questions for information without of our control, which we could not respond to, four questions I categorized as being fa- based on some fact, factual inaccuracy, and then five questions which would take a considerable amount of time for us to analyze and report back.
And when you say a considerable amount of time, do you have an estimate of time or cost?
I don't, because to be honest, on some of them, I'm not even sure how we would do it, uh, some of the questions around the environmental impacts of the demolition, the economic impacts, uh, I, we would have to engage relevant, uh, subject matter experts within staff, um, that's not something we do on a regular basis, so that's, those questions are a considerable amount of time.
And, um, would it be fair to say that some of those, um, questions, like the environmental impact, I mean, are the same as, or similar as any other, um, demolition that happens, uh, in, in the city of, uh, or in the downtown of a non-designated building?
I can't speak to that, I don't have that expertise.
Okay, um, okay, that's all the questions I have. So councillor Etherington, I said I would come back to you first with respect to, uh, a motion?
Well, comments first, uh.
Wait, no, you have to put a motion on the floor first?
Okay, the motion is in the hands of the clerk, and I've distributed, uh, copies to councillors, do you want me to read, read it, or just read it on the screen?
Uh, I think, uh, folks can, uh, read it on the screen, and if the clerk can post it, please.
And do you want me to comment now, Mr. Chair?
Uh, is, first of all, is there a second or further's motion? Second by councillor Fernandez, okay, uh, so go ahead, then, you can speak to it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully suggest, and I stress the respectfully, that in relation to these two downtown demolitions, I believe there was a lack of transparency, despite the fact most councillors campaigned on that issue of transparency. Among those who care deeply in our community, this has created a belief, not a conspiracy theory, that council wanted to see a shiny new downtown building on the Mayfair site, rather than make a real effort to save two heritage buildings. We've lost the trust and respect of this group, and I would add that this is not a group of screaming radicals, these are sensible, caring people about our history and heritage. Council was told and believed the buildings represented a dire public risk, and had to be torn down immediately to avoid being flattened by high wind or bad weather. Of course, what happened was that the demolitions took almost two months to complete, and at least a month to start, and they survived bad weather, so that surely has a bearing on what we staff has just been talking about. Now, as far as the heritage committee is concerned, I'm choking on that one, in addition, councillors ignored the recommendation of its own heritage committee, we can't rewrite that history, and that came from an emergency meeting held a few hours before council was asked to delay demolition and seek the opinion of a cultural heritage expert by the heritage committee, in order to identify ways to save the buildings, or perhaps the facade of the heritage buildings. And now, we tell these doubters that we will pay close attention to whatever the heritage committee recommends to us? No wonder these advocates are demanding an independent inquiry. The group has my support, and I have prepared a motion in support of an investigation that has been circulated to councillors. Now, I apologize for the notice, or lack of notice on this, I delayed it because I assumed that we would have two heritage councillors, councillor Gazola and councillor Janetsky, present tonight, and one of them would surely prepare a similar motion. Now, I assumed that, but unfortunately, one is on vacation, and one is at a conference. I also note, Mr. Chair, and this is happening regularly, our heritage staff, on what I believe to be a very important issue, are nowhere to be seen in this chamber. I believe that such an inquiry represents one of the few meaningful ways we can learn from, or prevent other mistakes involving the remaining heritage buildings. And for that reason, I would ask council to give me some indulgence and waive the procedure that I'm told requires two-thirds of council, not even of council present, I'm told it's two-thirds of the total council, including the two that are away, to consider this motion on what I think is a very important matter. Thank you.
Well, first of all, councillor Etherington, I mean, I guess I would look to the clerk, but I would tell you that because this issue is on the agenda, we were having delegations to it, it's, uh, certainly, uh, was known that we were going to be dealing with this, and the council may be taking some action based on the delegation, so it's not my view that I require a, a two-thirds consideration of a, of a particular motion one way or the other.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, that is correct, uh, because the item was listed on the agenda, waiving a notice is not required in this instance.
Okay, that was, that's, that was my understanding. So, uh, I've, as, I've already accepted your motion, and I've, uh, accepted the second or, so the motion is on the floor now.
Thank you.
Um, councillor Davie.
Thank you, just in comments, um, there were a lot of questions, a lot of questions put forward when this came up. Yes, it came up very quickly, and yes, there was a situation, um, that was dangerous, that's, that's the fact of the matter, but I do think there is definitely a hint of, um, more than a hint, we're going back to. But I do think there is definitely a hint of, more than a hint, we're going back to, I think, what amounts to conspiracy. Recapping the facts very, very quickly, the chief building official and everyone I've spoken to, people that used to work for the City of Kitchener, people that currently work for the City of Kitchener, his integrity is beyond reproach. That aside, he doesn't make the decision independently. There was two engineering reports that said the building was in a dire condition. At least one of those reports, I believe, indicated that the cost to repair the structure would have been double that of building a new structure. Continuing on the conspiracy theory, the owner, Mr. Neimer, this gentleman has a history of restoring heritage buildings. He showed us, I believe, a dozen when he was in to see us. He repairs these buildings, he does not destroy them. There is not a hint of conspiracy throughout this process, other than it was an unfortunate situation. Further, I think it's entirely inappropriate for us to consider spending taxpayer dollars, whether it's in the form of a consultant or wasted staff time trying to quell the fears of people who think that there is a conspiracy here. The problem with conspiracies is it doesn't matter what facts you throw at people that believe in them, they will continue to find ways to believe that the conspiracy exists.
Counselor Singh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to what Counselor Davey has said, the events that brought this entire thing or put them into motion were obviously outside of our control. Our staff from our building division assessed the building, they further had it verified through our chief building official, who received information by the property owner's structural engineer confirming the instability of the building, which we didn't take to face value. We took action to request for an independent review, and that was that independent review, by a outside engineer, structural engineer, who collaborated that information, saying yes, the building is indeed unsafe and structurally unsound. So the information that has already been provided through various different measures, has been repeated in constant different mediums, has all said the same thing, that the building was in a situation that it could not be restored or restored within reasonable costs that were not too indicative to the property owner, and it did indeed needed to be demolished, regardless of our own internal desire to preserve an important building, a part of our core and part of the history of the city. To continue on raising those same concerns of valid information that's already before us and nitpicking to raise concerns, to insinuate that there's something that was done wrong, my concern is, not that I don't believe in transparency, far from it, I absolutely, part of me wants to support this only to make that point clear that all of us here feel very strongly about transparency and openness when engaging with our citizens. But at the same time, by proceeding and accepting what the motion has been put in place by Counselor Etherington, by accepting the proposition and some of the points that the delegates made, is, I think, doing a service to ourselves because they are not factual. I am of strong opinion, the opinions, the information provided by our chief building official, information provided by the structural engineers, is correct, it's valid, and beyond that, there's nothing more that could have been done. There is a process that we need to establish in assessing buildings or ensuring something like this doesn't happen in situations that are not outside of control. I think it's unfair to associate what happened with the Mayfair in what we can do in ensuring preservation of other buildings, because this was completely outside of control, not within what we could have managed to do at that point. So I cannot support, reluctantly, I cannot support the motion or the opinion that's been set by the delegates, simply because I think it would shed a more shadow of doubt as to what the information that was provided, which was sound, which was clear, and looking into it any further would only do disservice and disrespect our staff, who we value and respect considerably, as well as, of course, the engineers that provided the information, who follow a certain guiding principles and code of ethics in when they do provide their opinion, and I place a lot of confidence in that. So based on that, I reluctantly can support the motion.
Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. I want to applaud Ms. Harmy and the other delegate, Patty, for coming and taking the time, you know, to really share these thoughts, I take them seriously. I also support the notion of transparency in government, in our government. This was a set of questions that were put together, they didn't want to be exclusive, so they just included all the questions that were given to them. First, there were 25, and then there were two more, so they just added them on, and then there were a couple more that were brought forward even during the presentation, and that's fine, ask all the questions, that's important. But if we were to go ahead and just design a full public independent inquiry just based on everybody and everybody's questions in a very, not even listed in terms of importance or level of detail, I think that would be irresponsible use of taxpayer money. I think that we can get more creative with the solution and come to a solution that satisfies the majority of people's concerns and is also not going to be onerous on staff time. I would commit to sitting down, should this motion fail, I would commit to sitting down with representatives of the four groups and looking at these questions and seeing if we can put them in a better, in an organized fashion, and then proceed with looking to staff to see which questions are easily answered just like that and which ones would take more time, and let's prioritize the questions and see how many we can just answer without much difficulty.
Counselor Galloway-Silock?
Yeah, as indicated previously, I have a separate motion. I did get a chance to write it out, it's not perfect by any stretch, but I did get a chance to write it out in very scribbled handwriting, I apologize for that. I can support Counselor Etherington at this time because I'm not prepared to go there. I don't think we need to go there, I think there's the ability for a medium step at this point in time, and so my motion would be as follows. Staff be directed to answer all the questions possible and provide all information possible, and that staff forward council the questions that require significant work and take no action on those questions at this time. Doesn't preclude us from asking for that information later, but it gives us a start into answering some of the questions, getting it in writing, and really trying to be forthright with the information that we do have that is possible to communicate to the public. I think it's a good faith gesture to try and to assist the passionate group of people to answer their questions and concerns, and the way I formulated it, I don't think it'll take a whole lot of staff resources and time. Heritage Kitchener is looking at the move forward, so this kind of is going to reflect a little bit on the past, but will help us to guide that move forward and help Heritage Kitchener provide them with the information that comes out of some of those questions. I don't question our CBO, I've spoken very, very highly of him in the past, but I don't think answering these questions again does that. I think it just helps try and put things into perspective and try to answer the questions that are being put out there. And like I said, I know that I could answer a couple of them right now from what the CBO has said through the presentations that we've received. Again, I really just believe this may be medium ground that we can try and get the information to the group of individuals who have worked very hard in providing us these questions, so that would be my motion, and again, I don't think it takes a whole lot of staff time to do as my motion says. So I can't support the full inquiry at this time, but I can definitely ask staff to answer the questions that have been before us, that they can. So I can give that to the clerk now.
Okay, thank you. So I'll come to that if Counselor Etherington's motion does not pass. Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, one of the comments that Ms. Harmy mentioned was about minimum building code, and I wish I had asked her a question at that time about that, because what I think she was alluding to was that when we're looking at a building, that sometimes we look at what is the minimum code that would be required. So I'm thinking that that was where she was going with this. But you know, when I look back to the first time we sat down and we heard about the Mayfair, and there were, I had quite a number of questions of Mr. Neimer about the taking care of the building, of the winterizing of the building, of what happened to that building over the winter, and the amount of removal of the inside of the building, and was it compromised? Some of those questions were answered and some of them were not. It's more than a conspiracy theory, it's more than a conspiracy allegation here. What it really is, is about the process that we talk about, we always want to follow process and policy, and in this case, it wasn't followed. Yes, our chief building inspector said that this building had to come down immediately because it was in dire straits, but as Counselor Etherington pointed out, it still took close to two months before it was down. And we had numerous historical heritage architectural people of great professional ability and expertise tell us that they've worked on buildings in England and overseas, that they've restored and managed to preserve, that were in likely, because they couldn't go into the building, worse state of repair than what the Mayfair was at the time of the decision that was made. So I'd like to support Counselor Etherington's motion, because I think even though we are hearing that it could cost us $50,000 or $100,000, I mean, you know, we're going to approve a whole bunch of tenders tonight that are certainly going to cost us a lot more than one of them, $73,000, to look at our square. I don't know that, I think that we need to be spending $73,000 when we have all kinds of staff that could give us answers about our civic square. So I, you know, I think that the concerns that were expressed on that first day, the first meeting, by architects and professional engineers, the concerns that were expressed by our Heritage Kitchener that asked us to hold off on our decision, were professional opinions as well, and so we should be taking a look at them. Yes, I agree that there are some questions that could be probably answered fairly quickly, whether they've been answered before or not, let's at least give respect to this advocacy group, which obviously has quite a strong support and strong following. And remember that when we're talking about heritage, that it's reflecting on the past, that help us learn about our mistakes that we've made so that we can use those lessons on processes and procedures to improve what we're going to do in our future. So I would like to see the support for Counselor Etherington's motion today.
Counselor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I think what's really important is what happens moving forward, and as Mr. May said, Heritage Kitchener has already been directed to investigate this and to come up with new and improved best practices. That's what's important, and that's where people like Lisa and the ACO can have their input and assist with coming up with new best practices. So I'm happy with where things are, and that's my comment on that.
Counselor Iannatus?
Yes, through you, Mayor Verbanovic. You know, the question about transparency and all that, that's been raised a few times. When you look at this, and I think, and Mr. May has mentioned this a few times too as well, most of these questions were brought out through this process through two council meetings or committee meetings. So I'm not too sure why we need to repeat them again and have staff time work on it again, just to give the answers that they're not satisfied with. And a lot of these, some of these questions too, deals with the private landowner, that's subject to his own, it's his own rights to whatever he wants to give out to the public. And as far as the process, I think our staff did a tremendous job, in particular, our chief building officer. When you factor in an older building and then an act of God, I don't, like, that caused a lot of the significant damage, and I'm not, what process is there to follow? He did his job, safety was the number one concern, and that's what it was. There is no process, that's it, that's how it's done, and safety is paramount. And, you know, you hear this wall, it took one month or two months, well, what happened if the building did fall and hurt someone? What would you say then? So, I mean, I think, I think this has all been out front, transparent in the first place, and that's why I can't support either one. I don't think staff should be wasting any more time on this, these have all been addressed.
Okay, just before I make my comments, I have one more question of staff, Mr. May. I know throughout this process, staff went to great efforts to try to be as transparent as possible in terms of making information available, posting it on our website, quite frankly, at levels that I don't recall ever seeing on this type of issue in the past. Wondering if you can just give us an overview of that?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to do that. What, since this issue came, became to be known, we've taken a number of steps, very proactive steps. We have posted seven very specific and detailed updates on the city's website. We proactively ensured that the members of the media were aware of those updates so that they could help report the information and share with the public. On our website, we've posted eight documents. These are engineers' reports, staff reports, demolition plan, they're documents that provide detailed information in terms of the issue. You may recall that the chief building official appeared before you on two separate occasions, and while I don't have the specific numbers, my rough recollection is that on each of those occasions, he answered questions from you for about two to two and a half hours. In addition, the chief building official attended a meeting of Heritage Kitchener where he answered questions, and he took the effort of walking up and down King Street to notify business owners to try to get as much information out to them, so that as their customers came to them and they asked questions, they would be able to have the information. So in my opinion, I don't know of many municipalities that would go to the level of openness and transparency that we have on this project.
Okay, thank you for that information, because I think it was important to share that publicly and remind those both in the council chamber and the viewing audience of that this evening. Been listening to all of the questions and comments that have been made this evening, and I have to say that I do find some of them quite disturbing on a number of fronts. Like others, I too am saddened by the fact that we lost this building in our downtown. Without a doubt, there were people on both sides of this issue. I received emails from heritage advocates who couldn't believe it was being torn down, and I heard from other people in the community who told me it, they felt it wasn't coming down fast enough. So there's certainly both sets of views that were out there. I also find that in this whole discussion and debate, I find it disappointing that there hasn't been more focus on all of the success stories we've had around heritage in our community, and, you know, the fact that just in the downtown neighborhoods alone, we have 143 out of 557 properties that have some sort of heritage designation on them, either individually designated, being as part of a heritage district, Victoria Park or Civic Center, or they're listed as being of heritage value, and I think we can't lose sight of that. I'm also very concerned about some of the, I won't say accusations, maybe suggestions that have been made here this evening about individuals, and quite frankly, if, I think if people consulted a lawyer, they'd find that they border on being libelous, except those accusations have been, I think, very carefully crafted to not include specific names, which is probably the same. names, which is probably the saving grace. As Counselor Davies said, I think, no matter where we go in this issue, there will always be a group of people that won't be happy with the response that comes from the city. I do believe that, that as Mr. May just indicated, we've gone above and beyond to try to make as many answers available to everyone as possible. I can't support the motion that's before us, because I think it's taking things to a level, quite frankly, that is not necessary. And I also think that much of what's being asked for will come from the work that's already being done by Heritage Kitchener. I know the suggestion has been made that council doesn't respect Heritage Kitchener. I beg to differ, because in fact, if you look at all, at many of the recommendations that come from Heritage Kitchener, council in fact, has adopted them. And I think to suggest anything else is not fair to council. And I think to also suggest that just because council doesn't support a recommendation from Heritage Kitchener, does not mean that council doesn't respect that group. The reality is, Heritage Kitchener is one factor, one set of recommendations that the people around this horseshoe need to consider, around a broad set of information and facts, when they need to make a decision. And that happens regularly in every issue that we do. And so I think we need to keep things in a factual and a little bit less of an emotional context in terms of what we're saying around this horseshoe in order to try to get headlines. So I will not support the motion that's before us this evening. I can support getting some, and I do that reluctantly, getting some of these questions that can quickly be answered, answered and put on paper, and add that to the website. But like Counselor Galloway-Sealock is suggesting, any that require extensive amounts of time, I'd want to see further direction from council on, if that was going to be required. And the ones that quite frankly are provincial responsibility, should simply be noted as being a provincial responsibility, because it's not our role to answer those. And with that then, I think we can move on, and we can hear what Heritage Kitchener has to say. These are people that we've entrusted in the role of giving council good advice. Let's at least give them the courtesy, the decency of having that opportunity, before we decide if something more than that is necessary. So with that, Counselor Etherington, since you moved the motion, you've asked...
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair, could we have a recorded vote on both motions, and would we get an opportunity to see the other motion?
Yep, absolutely. So we're dealing with your motion right now, and a recorded vote is, has been called. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion does not move forward. I can ask the clerk to put Counselor Galloway-Sealock's motion on the floor now, please. Counselor Galloway-Sealock, did you want to speak to it at all? There you go.
Just very briefly, please ignore the penmanship. I really just think this is an opportunity to move forward, a common sense motion, to give some back to the individuals who have put a lot of time and effort into this, by answering the questions that we can easily answer, and then it allows us, if some of the questions that staff don't feel, or feel that will take considered time, that will require further direction. So I think it's just a step that we can take that may help the process, and also help inform Heritage Kitchener moving forward. So it shouldn't be a whole lot of staff time, shouldn't be a lot of money, and it really can help all of us inform some of that basis moving forward for the Heritage Kitchener review.
Counselor Galloway-Sealock, I'm just wondering, you're, in the motion, you're sort of, and I understand where you're going with it, all questions possible, provide all information possible, wouldn't require, or those that would require significant work be set aside. Is there a time, amount of, an amount of time that you're suggesting, a maximum amount of time that staff would allocate to this? Is it five hours, is it 10 hours, is it...
No, I think you can just... I think Mr. May probably has already indicated there's about five that he thinks that would be significant, outside the ones that we may not be able to answer, period, which is acceptable, because it's all information that we can possibly, so I don't know that we would need to put a timeframe on it. So I don't think it should be that long.
Okay, so you're comfortable with? Yep, okay, thank you, Mr. May. Okay, is there, I need a second for this motion. Counselor Marsh, you're seconding? Go ahead.
Yeah, I second that motion, and I just would add that we are missing two questions, so I'd ask the delegates to forward those, to be added to the list. Yep, that's all.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, recorded vote. And I, and again, I will just, from a common point of view, I will reiterate, I'm going along with this somewhat reluctantly, because I believe that the role is being played by Heritage Kitchener. However, in the interest of continued transparency and accountability, as has been significantly demonstrated throughout this process, I'm willing to support the answers being put into writing. Some of them will be identical to what they were before, but at least it'll be in one place, and then we can move on with this issue. So with that, recorded vote has been called, people can vote, please. Those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, so we've dealt with, we've dealt with that issue. The next issue actually, and they'll just deal with very quickly, because I understand the delegation who's here to answer any questions needs to leave, and it's the issue of the Lav monument that's before us. And Brian, Mr. Rainville is here to answer any questions. So that's Finance Committee Number Two. And so if I can ask Counselor Davies to bring that forward.
Certainly it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh, that item number two of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay, I believe staff, Mr. Chapman, I believe you needed to provide some additional clarity on the issue of capital contingency for us this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments are with reference to the second part of Clause Two, which are found at the top of the second page of the Finance Committee Report. There were three items that council requested further information on. The first one was a funding source for your $10,000 allocation to the installation cost. And by email, we communicated the ability to fund that through capital contingency in 2015. So I don't know that you need to amend the first part of your motion to clarify that, if you're comfortable that that would be the funding source we would apply. We also provided information on the expected cost of perpetual maintenance that was supplied to us by the delegation. The annual costs are anticipated to be minimal, but about every 10 years, the cost could be in the range of $10,000 for painting and potentially tire work. And so I think it is important tonight that council confirm the extent of your commitment, if any, to perpetual maintenance, and if there is a desire to fund that, to identify a funding source. Initially, in our communications, we identified the possibility that the public art maintenance account could be used for this purpose. As we've looked more closely at it, we see that essentially, the requirements going forward are fairly closely balanced to the funding. And so while you could take funding from that source, it may be more expedient to simply make the allocation, if any, from capital contingency as well. And that way, you will not raid the public art funds and the ability to use those funds to invest in pieces that are already part of the public art collection. So again, I believe the issue of capital contingency is a fairly straightforward one. Some discussion on this issue of perpetual maintenance would be helpful this evening.
And on the issue of location, you're just recommending that it be on the Armory site?
Correct. It was committee's preference that it be located there, and your motion reflected that. We did supply a list of other sites, we did not believe any of them were superior, and provided some rationale for each.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Etherington?
Just some comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Counselor Galloway-Sealock, comments or question? Okay, so go ahead, Counselor Etherington.
Well, I just wanted to say, since our committee meeting, when I voted in favor of this, I've changed my mind on the issue, will not be supporting the recommendation, because I believe there's a better and more constructive way to spend at least $20,000 worth of taxpayer dollars. Federal government is offering 250 decommissioned Lav vehicles to serve as military monuments in Canadian communities, but they're dumping the cost on municipalities. I'm voting against the proposal because of the $10,000 bill to transport and install the Lav on city land. Staff now suggest, if I've got it correct, that taxpayers will also shell out an additional $10,000 to maintain the vehicle. And I wonder, although there seems a question mark on that, I wonder why the federal government seems unwilling to locate the memorial on federally owned sites like the local armory. Staff also predict that the local monument sites here in Kitchener likely do experience pushback from residents, disrupt gardens at the yard if it goes at the yard, and the would encounter opposition if located in any neighborhood park. Staff also say that the monument would have to circumvent heritage requirements if it ended up in either Kitchener's Civic or St. Mary's Heritage Communities. I would respectfully suggest that a better way to spend that $20,000 could involve, for example, paying a local artist to create a monument instead of a Lav vehicle. An even better use, from my opinion, would be to invest the cash in an affordable housing campaign recently launched by Kitchener's Working Center. So I would ask that councilers respectfully decline this offer, and if a majority supports the move, I would suggest we consult the public on the issue as we search for a potential site. Thank you.
So just to be clear before other people make their comments, the motion that has come forward from Counselor Davies, as I understand it, is what's number two in front of you, which is the site at 350, at the Armory, at 350 East Avenue, and a $10,000 contribution towards the installation. I have not heard anything with respect to the ongoing maintenance. Is that my correct assumption? Counselor Davies? Okay, thank you. Counselor Galloway-Sealock?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Chapman was looking for further direction, that's not in the motion with regards to the maintenance cost, and I, so I'd like to add to the motion that it be given its own funding, I don't remember the wording you used, but giving it its own funding, so that we don't jeopardize the rest of the public art maintenance funding, so that we have that separate item. And I know he put it more eloquently than I just did, but that would be what I would be moving. Again, I asked for the list of other sites, just because I wanted to make sure that this was the right site, and I think it was clear from the information we got back from staff that this is the right site at the Armory. And if it's my understanding, that if they don't get the government approvals that, in order to put it on that site, then we wouldn't proceed with the project. I think it's a piece that will enhance our community, and I think it being in front of the Armory is the right place for it to be. So I would add that to the, just that piece about the finances, the maintenance cost be added to the recommendation.
So Counselor Galloway-Sealock, are you, so you're moving an amendment that that be added? Is there a certain amount of dollars for that, that you're suggesting? Yeah, so, I mean, they did include some stuff in the report, but right now, that's not part of the recommendation, so if that's an amendment you're making, so, so $10,000 in total? Oh, in perpetuity? My count, Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, I think that's the issue that requires some discussion and clarification tonight. My recollection is that in the material supplied with the agenda, it didn't speak to the issue of perpetual maintenance, but in the delegation's presentation, it identified the request that the city take on the responsibility for perpetual maintenance. Your motion is silent on that issue right now, and I see you have three options. One is to decline any obligation for perpetual maintenance, and other is to make a contribution on a one-time or an ongoing basis to it, and the third is to accept, whatever the cost is, the ongoing requirement for perpetual maintenance. And so really, we're in your hands with respect to that. We've identified that the cost could be in the neighborhood of $10,000 every 10 years for painting and tire work.
Counselor Galloway-Sealock, you still have the floor?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't clearly understand that, and I apologize for that. I would put, I guess would add an amendment that we add 50% of the cost, I think there needs to be some cost sharing in this, so that we provide 50% of the cost in perpetuity for the ongoing maintenance.
Okay, I think perhaps, I don't know if the question is in perpetuity, or do we, because normally with any of the other projects, we sort of have a fixed amount, so I'm wondering if it would be like 5,000?
Sure, 5,000.
Towards that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll accept that amendment. Is there a second for it? Seconded by Counselor Marsh? Okay, Counselor Davies?
Thank you, and I don't want to unhinge anything here, just, I was a bit taken aback again by the expected maintenance costs, I was expecting, you know, perhaps a fifth of that or less. Is it, is there, is this time constrained? I understand the city of Waterloo hasn't been approached at all, and the city of Cambridge is undertaking it. Is there still time for any opportunity for the three municipalities to perhaps go together on this? I'm not particularly tied to even having the monument necessarily in the city of Kitchener, but are we aware of any timing constraints?
Perhaps we can ask Mr. Rainville to come down and answer that question? Welcome back, Mr. Rainville.
Thank you. In answer to Waterloo, I understand that the mayor of Waterloo is very interested in the potential of acquiring a monument in Waterloo. I cannot speak to where he would place it, but that was through a conversation that he had with one of our council members, and he was quite interested in the monument. So they're investigating, I understand.
Okay, so if, is there any time constraints? Would we be able to enter into a dialogue, let's say, with the city of Kitchener or Waterloo, to perhaps have one maybe close to the border, or something along those lines?
No time restraint. I don't see any time restraint that would be required. If you want to negotiate with the two cities, that would be fine.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. In light of that, Mr. Mayor, I would actually move defer all of this item until such time as we can negotiate with the city of Waterloo, and even include the city of Cambridge, to see if there's any interest in jointly putting a monument in the region.
Okay, before I take the deferral, I'll let Counselor Singh, you were in the queue to speak. I'll let you speak before I take the deferral.
I had comments, but I like the direction that Counselor Davies is going, so I will second that motion, or amendment, whatever.
So the motion's being deferred to our August meeting? Okay, is everyone clear on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is to defer... Motion is to defer in order to have further conversations with Waterloo and Cambridge and bring it back to the August meeting. Thank you, Mr. Rainville. We will now move to our next delegation. Ms. McGee has emailed me and has advised that something, something has come up, and regretfully, she wasn't able to be here today, and she apologizes for that and hopes to share her concerns with us at another time. So we'll go to item F. Mr. Britton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Be very brief. I'm here this evening with our client, Charlie Ormston, his associate, David Graham. We're here in support of item two, clause two on your planning committee minutes and report to you. I would just confirm two things. One is it was a positive process with a positive outcome, including heritage protection, which picks up on one of the themes this evening. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the efforts and engagement of the work counselor, Counselor Fernandez. And we would ask that you support the committee recommendation to you. Thank you.
Counselor Singh, if you can bring forward the recommendation.
Yes, that's why.
Actually, hold on. Just before you, because you're going to bring forward the recommendation, Counselor Fernandez, you have questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, so back to you, Counselor Singh, sorry.
Thank you. As already approved through the Planning and Strategic Constituents Committee, so moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway-Sealak, as outlined as item two, I bring this forward as a recommendation for approval.
Okay, Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Ormston and Mr. Graham and Mr. Britton for a process that was, was really listened to the constituents. And I know Mr. Ormston had a couple of surprises thrown at him. He dealt with that, with a lot of professionalism and politeness and respect for the community. I know that we're not going to make everybody happy, but I think that you've done a wonderful job of working with the community, and I think this is going to be a lovely subdivision. I know you don't usually hear those words coming from me, but we'll, I look forward to seeing it develop as it will. Thank you.
Thank you. So all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you, gentlemen. It's been passed. Thank you for your, your great work in trying to move this forward. We have one remaining delegation. It will require a motion by council to consider the item and its with respect to privatization of Hydro One and Ms. Eleanor Grant. So I will need a motion first to consider, and it would require 50% of those members present to add it on to the agenda. So that's a basic majority, so it'll be five, five of us, actually, there's nine here, so yeah, five of us, obviously. Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I wanted to bring that motion forward, that we allow Ms. Grant to speak.
Okay, is there a secondor for that? Counselor Marsh? All those in favor? Okay, that's carried. So Ms. Grant, if you can come forward. Welcome, Ms. Grant.
Thank you for...
They're just moving it down so it's a little more comfortable for you.
Let me get it up here. I understand I have five minutes.
Yes, you do.
I didn't know I was on right now. Yes, I live in Waterloo. I've been in the community approximately almost 50 years, and many of those years were spent in Kitchener. We've all seen the spectacular pictures of the night when Berlin was electrified in 1910. Something's wrong with the way I've got the mic here. There's feedback. We've all seen the pictures of the night that Berlin was electrified in 1910. The banners over King Street proclaimed "Power for the People." Adam Beck, astute conservative, by the way, fought for hydroelectric power to be a public asset. Why? Because he wanted businesses across Ontario to have equal access to affordable power. Later, he worked hard to get homes and farms electrified as well. Since the days of Sir Adam Beck, we've all come to see Ontario Hydro and its successors as a sacred trust and a source of pride. If we were to lose public ownership and control over Hydro One, the potential impact on Ontario's cities and our local distribution companies could be enormous. You may have seen our MPP Diane Verniel's column in the Kitchener Citizen, which outlines the government's position for privatization. She states that by retaining a 40% share, Ontario could somehow prevent the outcomes that we all fear: skyrocketing rates, shares being resold and consolidated in foreign hands, and loss of all regulatory influence. Ms. Verniel's arguments don't add up, to my mind, anyway. Let's look at the possible impacts on Kitchener-Vilmott Hydro. If our hydro bills soared, would we have any recourse? If this council, or a future one, wished to bring in a local power generation policy, say, could we be sued under the WTO? How great would the pressure be to let private interests buy up KWH? How would the new hydro ombudsman that Ms. Verniel speaks of be able to protect us against such forces? If we don't know the answers to these questions and more, we need time to do the necessary due diligence. We need to ask the province not to go ahead with this privatization plan at this time. I have received endorsements from the leadership of several local groups: the Waterloo Region Labor Council, Grand River Environmental Network, and Council of Canadians, who will be bringing the issue of Hydro One before Guelph Council soon. I've also received support from former councillor Jean Halboom and from councillor Zig Yannetzki, who happens to be in Saskatchewan tonight.
You have one minute yet?
I have one more paragraph.
That's okay.
I urge you to look into the questions I raised above with some urgency. The first IPO of 15% of Hydro One is already being prepared, so there's no time to lose. Please let the Ontario government know that the people of Kitchener still want "power for the people" to be a reality and not a distant memory. I don't know if, if this is the right time to bring forward a resolution similar to what other cities have done. There have been seven cities have passed such a resolution, or if the right way to go might be to investigate these questions. I don't know what kind of structure you might like to invoke.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening, consistent with council's bylaw, because this was a walk-in. We won't be able to ask you any questions this evening, but thank you for, for coming in.
Thank you.
Is council, is council looking to do anything further with this? It would require a two-thirds. Okay, Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I received information through Ms. Grant, and I took a look at the links she sent me. There have been a number of municipalities that have moved motions that spoke to this, and it's not unlike other motions that we've passed to send a message to the provincial government, and not that unlike the motion yourself, Mr. Mayor, that you're planning on putting forward at the, speaking to the federal government and the election.
In all due respect, the two different issues, but...
No, but I mean, it is speaking to higher levels of government about our support or lack of support of a particular issue.
Okay, so process-wise, Counselor Fernandez, the first thing I would need to do is get a motion to add, to consider a motion on an emergency basis, and it would require two-thirds support of council. So you're asking that that be done?
Yes, I am.
Okay, is there a secondor for that? Sorry? Do you want to...
I have, I have a motion here. It's quite long, convoluted, so I was going to try and write it out, but it, I mean, you can post, put it on, it starts with the whereas, and then go to the, I guess, go to this page. It's essentially the motion that the city of Oshawa put forward. So I guess it would start with, therefore be it resolved. It talks, essentially what Ms. Grant was talking about, that it removes the, the ability for hydro, privatizing, by privatizing Hydro One, it removes the scrutiny of Auditor General, Financial Accountability Integrity Commissioner, and for many, many reasons, concerns also about the possible increase in cost to our citizens. So I'll let you read that.
So the first thing I'll ask, though, is even before we can debate it or discuss it, or ask questions of staff, is there a secondor to have this considered on an emergency basis? Counselor Etherington? Okay. So if we were to, just so everyone is clear, if we were to vote to deal with this, this evening, we can either vote in favor or not support the motion that Counselor Fernandez has brought forward. If we were to have the two-thirds to even deal with this issue, we also would be in a position to, to take the position that council does not take a position on this issue, if, again, only if we added it on to the agenda as, as an emergency basis. So it has been moved and seconded that, yes, okay, Counselor Davie?
So I'll be frank, my interest, if, if any interest, would be that we take no position. But being that this motion has been brought forward first, we wouldn't be able to take a position of no, just, just trying to work this logically, wouldn't be able to take a position of not taking a position. We'd have to vote on this first, which would essentially be a position. Do you follow my logic?
Yes, yes. So, so to be clear, from a process point of view, and the clerk can, can help me here, but from a process point of view, the first thing we're going to do is simply to have a motion to deal with this on an emergency basis on the agenda. If the vote is yes, then, stop me from saying anything wrong at any point. Okay? Okay? So, so we would need a motion to waive notice, so that would be, require two-thirds. Then we would go to the motion that Counselor Fernandez has brought forward. If that motion does not succeed, council could then take an alternate motion, which is that council not take a position on this issue. And so we could deal with it under those circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
So you're clear? But first we need to do is waive notice. Okay? Everyone clear on that? If you want to deal with this issue, whether we support this motion or decide to take no action or whatever, we first need to waive notice, and it requires two-thirds of council present to, sorry, of all of council or council present? Of the whole council? So eight of us would, eight out of the nine would need to support that to deal with it tonight? Okay? Everyone clear? So if we support it, we can support waiving, we can deal with it one way or the other tonight. Otherwise, we can't deal with it any further this evening. So all those in favor of waiving? All those opposed? And it's not two-thirds regardless, so we will not be dealing with this issue this evening. Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, we have a delegation here. I'm sorry, I don't know whether they're waiting to speak or they just want to hear the decision on the dog designation appeal, which is, and I believe our committee of whole, under, so I just wanted to move that forward if we can.
This is number three for Bonsi?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to move that? Seconded by Counselor Marsh. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, I have a quick call. As the, as one of the members of the Dog Designation Appeal Committee, I really would like to just make sure that it's very clear to the Bonsis that the conditions that were put in place at the day of the decision, that they are strictly adhered to. I know that they were put in, in good faith, and I know that you're very interested in making sure that your dog is safe and that people who walk in the park and walk around the neighborhood feel safe as well. So I just wanted to just reiterate that again. Okay? Thank you. Great, thank you so much.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, we'll now go on to the tenders. Any questions on the tenders? Tender number one, the tractor front-end loader. Is there a question on that, Counselor Fernandez? No? Question number two, the city hall outdoor spaces. Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you, and I appreciate, I met with Ms. Palmer Novak?
Novakovic.
Novakovic, thank you. Today, I did have a number of questions from her, but I had not received a response. So I don't know if you were able to find out about the information that I had asked related to where this was in the budget and where the money would be coming from. Because of my understanding, when we discussed this in relation to the Canada 150, that it was in our budget as a issue paper. It talked, spoke about doing a master plan, but it seemed to me that it was not imminent. It wasn't planned for this year specifically. So I would like to maybe understand a bit further from either Mr. Chapman or...
Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mayor Benavich, you are correct that in our budget material, we identified this as an unfunded item in 2015. But as you were, since that time, it became the subject of a federal grant application, and on that basis, we're moving ahead with the recommendation to proceed this evening.
Okay, so it was number four on the list of, of recommendations. So where are we getting this money from?
At this point, the assumption is through a successful application. Ultimately, if we're unsuccessful, we'll have to deal with this as a budget issue in 2015, or 2016.
I guess that, that's essentially my concern. I realize that we can't, I mean, we can, we can turn down the tender and, and as Ms. Palmer Novak, sorry, I'm very sorry.
Novakovic.
Novakovic, thank you, indicated to me that could put us in a, in a tense situation with the fact that we've tendered this out already. Help me understand why we would, I, I know that because we're looking for the funding from the one, the Canada 150, we would have to, we have to tender this out before we get the funding. Is that correct?
No, I think, as you recall, though, the timelines are tight in that we would be looking to undertake construction in the next construction season, and so we need to proceed with the master plan and then the design in this year so that we're in a position to commence construction next year.
Okay. All right, well, based, based on, based on the information you've given to me, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't feel comfortable supporting something that I don't, that could have budget implications into, into 2016. So I'll leave the rest to council to decide.
Okay. A couple of questions that I have of you, Mr. Chapman, just on that then. So this is to basically look at all of the outdoor spaces on the building that's about 25 years old. I mean, the overall project at the time was 65 million, and, and so we're now looking to deal with the, the updating of, of... now looking to deal with the updating of all of the cracked, and quite frankly, I think there's some issues that potentially are bordering on creating some challenges for us out there. Mr. Taggy?
Mr. Mayor, you are absolutely correct. I think the building is 23-plus years old, and it's a good practice in facility management that when you reach in that age of 20, 25 years, that when components require repair or replacement, then before you proceed with them, you should have a master plan, so that you know you have a long-term vision as to what you want to do with the space. And with or without the federal program, we would require this master plan, so that when components start to break down, we have a plan on hand, which will guide us through in terms of what we need to do with various components. The second part I would like to point out to you is, and just as an example, that part of the city hall parking garage sits under the city hall square, and over the years, as you know, we have been adding salt. And one of our concerns is that what that may have done in terms of the expected life of the garage. So, one of the things we'll be looking at as part of the master plan would be the alternatives to salting. Just, this is just one example, and obviously, the concrete, as you know, needs replacement, and we would really not want to proceed with any of those projects without having a long-term vision and a good master plan, which will guide us through this process.
Okay. And the only other question I have is, how many, do we have any idea, how many tens of thousands of people go through that square in a year? Any rough idea between all the special events and everything?
I'm sorry, I don't, but perhaps on the team, somebody might have better ideas to how many people use the square, but I think, from my observations, every time I go out there, certainly, I see a lot of people enjoying themselves, and even in wintertime, I think I've seen people out there, but I don't have the exact numbers. Maybe somebody else did.
Mr. Chapman?
Not on that point, no. I just wanted to correct my earlier comments, and now that I read the financial implications, if we're successful in our grant application, we would seek to recover whatever we, whatever costs we could through that program for the master plan. In the meantime, the city does have a capital provision that funds maintenance of the city hall complex, and Facilities has prioritized the master plan out of those funds. So, I believe I led council to the conclusion that if we're not successful in our grant application, the project will be unfunded. That's not the case. There is funding that's available now. Ideally, though, this could become an eligible cost for the grant if it is approved.
That's a helpful clarification. Thank you. Counsel Singh?
Yeah, that was actually one of my questions regarding the funding aspect that Mr. Chapman has clarified. Just want to quickly say, and it's my opinion, that obviously, with a 25-year-old building, the work needs, it needs to be done irrespective of what the outcome is of the granting process. And although I had supported the reallocation of the priority, that was never to say that this other work that needs to be put into place in remediating the age and deterioration over time isn't necessary. That's an absolute necessary step that needs to be taken, and the planning has to be incorporated as part of it.
Counsel Marsh?
Thank you. Just wondering, in this consultant service of developing a master plan, to what degree is there public consultation?
Mr. Taggy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, public consultation and with the stakeholders will be a key component of the report and the process. So, when we, when you see the report come out, you'll also see the results of what we found out in terms of the stakeholders' input.
So, just to ask, is council considered a stakeholder group? Would we maybe hear about it before the report comes to council?
Most definitely. Council is an important stakeholder, obviously, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'll take a vote on that issue now, before we go further. Recorded vote? Sure. All those in favor, actually, can turn on the recorded vote? All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Any questions on number three? The noise analysis? Any questions on Rothstein Avenue? Any questions on the change room ventilation? Sorry? On change room ventilation? Okay. Actually, Counsel Davies is ahead of you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just, my only question, I'm not sure how many arenas we have offhand that are open during the summer months, but I just wanted to double-check, make sure that we did look at the possibility of perhaps converting another rink, since we're looking at this at the same time.
Mr. Taggy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To the best of my knowledge, this is the only arena that was built by private sector and which we subsequently acquired, and one of the things we found out was that the heating ventilation system was not up to standard, and that's the reason we're doing it. As far as I know, other arenas don't have the same problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Fernandez?
Yes. There's a deficit of $37,000 for this project. Where and how will we fund that deficit?
Mr. Taggy, if you can turn yourself back on, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. An amount of $200,000 was budgeted specifically for this project, but also, we have funding for heating ventilation systems across the entire city, and there is money available in those projects to fund the shortfall.
Is that, is that a reserve fund, or is that a facilities, like, I mean, it just says total funding available is $200,000. It doesn't say where it's coming from.
Yes.
There is funding available in the operating side of the budget in facilities to provide money for the deficit.
Okay. So, it says in here, it's Sports World Maintenance Capital Fund. So, that fund has $200,000 in it?
It says that's where the deficit will come from.
Okay. Just from that. But then, so that's the deficit, then the $200,000 is coming from a general provision?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I guess, I know this isn't a tender question, and I know we're trying to focus on tender questions, but I have to, I have to understand that, why would we take, why would we have taken on the ability to do this, to have this facility used during the summer months, which I think would, is creating the problem. If we had done what we do with all the other arenas, we wouldn't be struggling with this problem. Is that, would that be a correct assumption?
Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This is the arena that many of our adult user groups go to through the summer. That allows us capacity to shut down some of our other arenas and do regular maintenance. And so, it's heavily used by adult user groups, and as a matter of fact, as a result, generates more revenue than several of our youth groups. So, it's about moving our user groups around to free up time to work on our other ice surfaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, any questions on Ottawa Street LRT? Counsel Galloway-Seelock?
I just want to clarify why the region's only, we're only recovering $600,000 from the region.
Mr. Taggy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There is a rather complex formula that is used in the legislation, where there is a road operating authority and other authority that they do the work. We do not recover 100% of the cost. And so, the numbers which you see in front of you are based upon a formula specified in the legislation.
Okay. Counsel Galloway-Seelock? Yeah, maybe...
So, is it because it's newer infrastructure, or that it's aging infrastructure, and therefore they, we would be replacing it in due time anyways?
Mr. Taggy, I think the question, and Counselor Davies touched on it, we have an agreement with the region with respect to the LRT on how we're dividing up any, any work that needs to be done in the, underneath the road, based on the years that the infrastructure has been in existence. So, younger infrastructure gets more money, older infrastructure gets less money, because we would have had to replace it. Is that correct? And I think that's where you're going with your question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, but also, that formula, or the agreement, is based upon what the legislation provides in terms of, as I said earlier, there is a formula in the, in the legislation as to when two authorities, operating road authority and other authority do work on the same space, then there is a formula established.
I'm just reading in the report again, that there has been significant increases in this project. Is that to be expected moving forward on others, or, it just says in the last paragraph on the first page, there's an increase of approximately 50%, and then after further negotiations, a proposed 25% increase. Is that to be expected moving forward?
Mr. Taggy, if you can leave your mic on. Go ahead.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. Through you again, the answer I'll provide will be in two parts. I think part of the increase is frankly based upon the amount of construction taking place. I think so council is absolutely right. But the second part of the increase, specifically for this project, is because of the complexity of the contractor having to work in a very tight timelines, and so, a part of this work was originally included in a contract with the contractor, but some of the work, which is more complex, the contractor indicated that he would not, or he could not hold the prices for the second renewal of the original contract. I'm sorry, it's a complex, I don't know if I made it clear or not, but basically, it comes down to, we had the original contract for one year, and that expired in March of this year. We have the option to renew that contract for two further terms of one year each, and through mutual agreement, obviously. And in, during the negotiations, while the contractor agreed to hold the prices for this year, same as last year, he did not agree that he could hold the prices for certain works, specifically with respect to the LRT construction. And that's why we are in this position where we had to renegotiate that contract.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, I don't know, this is a question for Mr. Taggy or Mr. Chapman, but are we dealing with, because this is the gas utility, and it's partially regulated by OEB and so on and so forth, is there a difference with how this is being handled versus sewer and water? Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Worship. Yes, it's my understanding that the region entered into a different cost-sharing agreement with all area municipalities for water and sewer. In the case of the gas utility, in Waterloo and Cambridge, Union Gas is the provider, and so, we're being treated similar to other gas utilities that operate within the right-of-way. As Mr. Taggy has indicated, provincial legislation in that case specifies the cost-sharing formula, and that's what's been applied here.
Thank you. Any question on the sole source network analysis modeling software? Okay. If not, somebody want to move the balance of the tenders, moved by Counsel Fernandez, seconded by Counsel Ionidas? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Great. Thanks, Michelle. We'll now move on to the reports of the committees, and we will start with Community and Infrastructure Services, Counsel Ionidas. You can click in, please. Go ahead.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Frank Etherington, that the Community Infrastructure Services Committee's recommendations, as follows through one and 14, be adopted.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Not all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Finance and Corporate Services Committee, Counselor Davy?
Click me in there?
Yep.
There we go. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Singh, that items, I've already dealt with item number two, so items one and three be adopted.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Not all those in favor? Opposed? That too is carried. Item number three, Counselor Singh, or Planning and Strategic Initiatives, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Galloway-Seelock for Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee for item number one, as item two has already been taken care of, that it be approved.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Reports, what committees we've dealt with, unfinished business, Counsel Fernandez, if you can click in, because I just want to bring forward a motion with respect to, and it was circulated in the agenda, and there's a memo that you received, as councils, those who attended FCM are aware, there's a call from both FCM coming out of the conference and the Big City Mayor's Caucus, calling on a national leaders debate on municipal issues. At the time of the conference, two of the parties had agreed to it, and the call happened there at the conference. Since then, a third one has come on board, and we're still waiting for the fourth national party to hopefully agree. The key priorities for municipalities going in the election are centered around job creation, reducing commute times, making housing more affordable, greenhouse gas emission reductions, and community safety. And so, we're being asked to support this motion to, to basically indicate municipal support for a national leaders debate on municipal issues. So, I'll move, and I think Counselor Singh will second it, as he's been on committees of FCM. So, I see Counselor Singh is in the queue?
No, I just had queued into second the motion, and thank you for bringing this forward, as the foundation of our nation, local municipalities have to have a greater engagement as part of the federal election, and I think the issues that are impactful to the local municipalities need to be brought in the forefront in that national dialogue as part of this democratic process. So, I'm glad to see this forward.
Okay. Thank you. And Counsel Davy?
Thank you. Just actually wanted to ask if, which party actually hasn't agreed to be part of the debate yet?
As of this point, the Conservative Party has not agreed yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. And then, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Regional council update. I think everyone, we had the regional council, all council meeting, and so, the main issues for everyone to be updated on are, were updated last, last week at that meeting. Questions and answers? Counsel Fernandez?
Actually, it's not really a question or an answer. I wanted to, it's kind of under new business. I know sometimes we use this opportunity to announce something that's happening within the city and our ward. On Saturday, July 11th, from 2 till 5, our Society for Preservation of the Upper Dune is holding a front yard talk, invites people who walk and talk and are interested in heritage to come down and meet with residents who walk along Dune Village, Tilt Drive, Willifong, and Matura. If you require any further information, you can contact myself. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Davy?
Thank you. If I could, just like to ask publicly the actions that staff are undertaking as a result of the Ever After Music Festival that generated some noise complaints in the ward that I represent, as well as others. So, if I could ask Mr. May, I know that we've had some emails back and forth, but something that might be worthwhile, making a public statement.
Mr. May?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor, we certainly did receive a considerable number of complaints coming out of that particular event. As a result, bylaw staff have already begun to review other municipalities and look at how we can strengthen our ability to enforce our noise bylaw more effectively. how we can strengthen our ability to enforce our noise bylaw more effectively. So a report will come back to council at some point, once they've had an opportunity to look at those best practices, and they'll make recommendations for your consideration.
Okay, any other, no other questions or answers, or new business? Okay, if not, then, it's been moved by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Ionitis, that leave, be given the mover and seconded to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to committee of the whole. Before I take that motion, there is a late starter. Madam Clerk?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, we actually have six late starter items. One relating to Community and Infrastructure Services Clause Number Eight, CIS Clause Number Thirteen, CIS Clause Number Fourteen, and PSEC Item Number Two, as well as one to do with Netherwood Road and Netherwood Crescent, and an amendment to the traffic bylaw from FCS Clause Number Four, from our May 11th meeting.
Okay, so those have been moved and seconded, Counselor Fernandez, you have a question?
When it's a late starter like this, and it's something that's in your ward, so Netherwood Crescent and Netherwood Road is in my ward, can I ask a question on what that's related to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, can you help me understand, Madam Clerk, what that is?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is a proposed bylaw to exempt from part lock control Block Four and Block Seven from a registered plan.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. Doesn't mean a lot to me, but...
These are all things that we would have dealt with through planning committee previously, and this is the implementing bylaw now.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor then? Opposed? That too is carried. It's been moved by Counselor Etherington, the committee resolved itself into the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I need a mover for a second read, second reading of the bylaw, sorry. Thank you.
Move.
And those in favor? None against? I call for a mover for item two, moved by Counselor Singh. Those in favor? Those against?
Item four.
Item number three's been dealt with, item four, the noise exemption. Counselor Fernandez moves it. Those in favor? Those against? Thank you. Item number five, the Holy Trinity Serbian Church, moved by Counselor Ionitis, those...
Well then, we have a number of questions.
Question?
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, it's not to do with the noise, it's actually, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Turner is aware of the concerns that I have, it's really around parking, is there anything that we can do, and I bring it up now just because it's an opportune time, because this noise exemption comes through, is with respect to the parking, and the parking on Fisher-Halman Road. It's a serious concern by many residents in the area, is there anything that we can do to try and curb that moving forward?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, we are aware of this issue, it's an issue that comes up every festival season in this area. We're working with the church staff to enter into agreements with the plaza across the road on the other side of Fisher-Halman to access some parking, and my understanding is that there is a positive relationship between the church and the mall owners, to the extent that they're available to you, or they're making parking available to offset the impact right on Fisher-Halman Road.
Is there any opportunity to do some no parking along there, even as a pilot maybe for one year, maybe not the whole street, but at least some of it really around that plaza entrance?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, with Fisher-Halman being a regional road, we've brought this up before with the region, they've been hesitant to make any changes to the street, however, we are in ongoing discussions with them with regard to changes to their uniform traffic bylaw leading up to the city's bylaw in the near future, so I'll raise the issue again.
Is there anything that you need from this council to strengthen that with the region, to encourage them to enact that privilege just during this time? I know it's just specifically a concern that I hear every year.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, what I can do is make regional staff aware of the discussions taking place tonight, and see what sort of emphasis that provides.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Singh, Counselor Etherington, Counselor Singh also has a question?
Counselor Singh? Thank you, Mr. Chair, now we've had some past concerns with this event, that steps have been taken to mitigate and dealing or speaking with the organizers, and there has been some improvement. I wouldn't say all those issues have been resolved, but I have sensed a somewhat of an improvement from past years. Is that dialogue going to continue? Are we going to reiterate some of the concerns that are obvious and repeated each year in the past?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, yes, we have this conversation with the church group every year. They've expanded the distribution area of the notice prior to both events. It still results in complaints, not a significant number, certainly not anywhere close to recent events. What we've explained to them, that this is an annual cultural and religious festival, which makes it difficult for us to, sorry, excuse me, to control through the noise exemption process in terms of denying them. Whenever we've had those discussions with residents around the annual and religious nature of the events, it usually alleviates their concerns.
Right, and my concern isn't as much anymore about the noise, it's sometimes with the, some property owners on the back-ending properties where they've had some issues as to the proximity of the event taking place, close to the property line, and debris being left after the event. Those are things I would hope that those facts be reiterated, as opposed to us having to consider property-centered issues afterwards, that's all.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, I'm aware of the fact that the event organizers have in the past reached out directly to the affected property owners, as opposed to just simply putting a notice in their mailbox to have discussions, and certainly invite them to the festivals to try and build a relationship there, but I'll certainly take that concern back.
Good, and those are the steps that has improved and limited the number of complaints that have come forward in the past year, so thank you, with your effort with the organizers as well.
And Counselor Etherington, Counselor Marsh has a question yet?
Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. Just a question about the timing of the event, I wonder if the festival needs to make a lot of noise on a Sunday evening, up till 11:00 PM, and I'm just wondering if that was ever something that was discussed, to maybe make that more, but like 9:00 PM end time for the loud music?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, in the past, the timing has not really been a concern, given that it's in the summer months, I can certainly speak to them. I did mention in light of recent events, that noise exemptions on Sunday nights are now on our radar screen, and they have indicated that by 11 o'clock, or certainly by late evening on Sunday night, the festivities have reduced to the point where the noise really is not so much of an issue. What we found in looking at the timing of complaints in the past, the noise issues that have been reported to us are more so in the late afternoon, very early evenings.
Okay, thank you, I really don't have any experience with this festival, just considering recent, you know, experience, that was one of the main concerns that I heard was, why so late when kids have to get up at that time for school? But in this case, a lot of parents are still putting their kids in camps that start at a regular, you know, school time as well, and so kids still need to go to sleep, but it sounds like that's not a concern, this one, thanks.
Those in favor of item five? Against? Seeing none, we dealt with number six, do I have a mover for number seven? Moved by Counselor Ionitis, those in favor? Anyone against? Thank you.
Move that the committee rise and report?
Thank you.
So you go, all in favor?
All in favor.
And now you do your line.
Now me?
Yes.
That the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date as attached here too, and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Ionitis, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously, and seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. I think just before we adjourn, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Canada Day on Wednesday, it is the 50th anniversary of our Canadian flag, and for those in the viewing audience and here still in the chamber, just a reminder that we will be having Canada Day celebrations here from 4:00 PM, ending with our fireworks around 10:45 on Wednesday evening. So with that, it has been moved by Counselor Ionitis, that, he had his hand up first, that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.